Aloha mai kako, aloha. Oh, I know it's already a long week and it's only Tuesday, but thank you guys so much for being here. My name is Samantha Decord. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Ma'ili Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-Six, and I am calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October fifteenth, 2024, and we are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. We do have a very full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. Those who are joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes, officials' monthly reports under three minutes, and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant at Arms is not with us tonight. Oh, she is online, but we'll go ahead and help to keep time and keep everybody on track. So call her my if I have to shorten your comments when it reaches the two-minute mark. Okay. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your manao on our agenda items and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. Before we get started, we're gonna go ahead and open in Pule. So I believe I saw... Would one of our haumana from Kavae Hona like to open our meeting in Pule? No? Okay, okay. I'll ask Auntie Vau, Manoa, if she can open us up in Pule. Thank you, Auntie.
E pule kako. Our Father in Heaven, we're so grateful for this day that we have had today to share thy aloha with those we came in contact with. We are so grateful to be able to be here this evening to hear more of the events, situations, and solutions that are coming into our Nanakuli and Ma'ili area. We ask thy Spirit to be with us throughout this time, that we may be guided in our hearts, our actions, our mind, that we may be able to share those things that would benefit our ohana, our community, and our future. We're grateful for the leadership of our board members and our board chair, grateful for those who are able to be present in person and for those who are with us virtually. We are grateful for the leadership of those in our community, in our state, and in our nation, and ask thee to continue to guide them, that the choices that they make will be for the benefit of all people. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Auntie Vau. Okay, so first up, we have Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you for being with us this evening. If you could share your report.
Good evening, Board and Community. Captain Scott O'Shaw with the Nanakuli Fire Station. I'm here to give our October report, which is statistics provided below represent the confirmed number of incidents in our neighborhood's geographical area for the previous month. Uh, so the statistics we have for September twenty twenty-four, we had one structure fire, three wildland brush fires, nine rubbish fires, one cooking fire, and four activated alarms with no fire. For emergencies, we had a hundred and nine medicals, five motor vehicle collisions, and no hazardous materials incidents. The fire safety tip and announcement given by the Honolulu Fire Department for October is, uh, fire safety tip is smoke alarms. Make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, you can visit fpw.org. And basically, they say install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, for example, like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button and replace all smoke alarms when they are ten years old or they stop responding when you test them. That's our report.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I'll open it up for questions. First, Board members, any questions for HFD? Go ahead, Board Member Corona.
Yes, Captain, thank you. Um, last month, uh, the other shift that was here mentioned about the CAT system not operating at Nanakuli Avenue. Is that still non-operational? And the reason why I'm asking is I've got, um, supposed, I've reached out to DTS. I've queried them. I have DOT meeting tomorrow, and I wanted to make sure I continue to address it with them, but I wanted to make sure if it's still not functioning.
Yeah, thank you. From what I know, it's not, it's still not functioning. No one's informed of us if it worked or not, and I believe the last alarms we go through, it's still, it's not operational.
Am I pronouncing it correctly, saying the CAT?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I know Opticom is on Farrington Highway. CAT is on the surf, on the side surface street to trigger the change of the light, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. And I'll follow up with you guys next month on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions? If not, I'll go ahead and open it up to community. Community, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? If not, we're gonna go ahead and let them go. Thank you so much. Be safe out there. Mahalo, mahalo.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll go ahead and move it over to Honolulu Police Department. I see that we have Corporal Pagan online and Sergeant Fumi. So whoever wants to take it away, he can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan, Honolulu Police Department District Gate Community Policing Team. Uh, with me tonight is Sergeant Boroka as well as Lieutenant Carrera. Uh, I do have your stats, stats for September. In September, we had thirty-eight motor vehicle thefts, five in our area, fourteen burglaries, none in our area, a hundred and thirty-four thefts, twenty-one in our area, thirty-five unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, five in our area. Uh, there's a total of six thousand two hundred eighty-nine calls for service, one thousand sixty-eight were in our area. The only thing I did want to mention is that on Friday at the Nanakuli McDonald's, we will be having a coffee with the cop from nine-thirty to, uh, I'm sorry, seven-thirty to nine-thirty at the Nanakuli McDonald's. The community is welcome to come down and share a free cup of coffee, talk story with the policeman there. No agendas, no speeches, just open conversation. Other than that, I'm open to any comments, concerns, or questions.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions for HPD? Go ahead, Board Member Corona and the Board Member Myers.
Corporal Pagan, just a quick question. Daily, I drive, when I drive down through Wainai, um, of course, I'm looking at the substation there, and I see a lot of activity, which is great. Uh, but in the evening, there is no activity. Is it because the additional officer, uh, traffic division that's out here to help out? Is it that they're not doing it in the evening and they leave the facility? Or is there a reason why it's not being manned, I guess, in the evening versus when it's being pretty utilized throughout the day? Thank you.
Um, the station is being manned. The station itself is being manned twenty-four hours a day. During the evening time, you may, you may not see as many police vehicles at the police station only because we are a little bit more busy at night, so they may be out patrolling more often than during the daytime. But yeah, that, so the increase officer presence in the district is going on whether it's daytime or nighttime.
Okay. Very good. I'll go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Corporal Pagan, aloha. Corporal Pagan, um, I have a very important question that I had prepared for you for this evening. But when I arrived here, um, I saw that there was a crowd of people here. And you know, we have Kiki in our meeting, and as board members, we're required to create decorum and order. So I'm asking you if you can send HPD officers here because we have some individuals that are in the parking lot distributing what I consider defamation material, which is a form of harassment. Defamation is harassment. And the children that go to school, they understand what it's like to be bullied. And so we have, this flyer has been given out with our Chair's picture on it, our Councilwoman's picture on it, and our past Chair, Patty Terrio's picture on it. It also quotes proverbs and makes reference to wicked women ruling and also lining their pockets. These are one hundred percent defamation one-on-one. And so I'm hoping that our meeting can stay in order, but I wanted to make it declare to the public that this is grounds for a lawsuit defamation of character. But if the people that are dispersing should get unruly, may I kindly ask you to send HPD officers here to remove them from our meeting and the presence of our orderly meeting where we have important information and important business to conduct. So on another, on regarding the question that I had prepared before, I came here and I saw this thing going on outside. Okay, so my question is for HPD. I consider this issue a form of environmental racism. Environment is the place we live, our community, and this issue will impact our community in negative ways. This issue, this issue is also about leaders in town, Honolulu, wanting to keep their environment clean and beautiful, what I consider nimby's, not in my backyard, at the expense of another community like Senate District Twenty-Two taking on the issues they don't want to see in their community. Okay, so my question to HPD relates to M for mental, H for health, one, MH1 training of HPD officers to support a new law that the legislature passed, Senate Bill Three-One-Three-Nine, during this year's twenty-twenty-four legislative session by both the Senate, by senators, including my Senator Miley and House, which the governor signed into law on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four as Act Eighty-Six. Later, I'm going to ask questions regarding the mental health component of this law and the impacts on our community to the Governor and Mayor's rep, our senator, our representative, and our councilwoman. Corporal Pagan, Sam Moku gave a presentation in August to the Makali Mo'ili'i neighborhood board on homeless solutions the city are implementing. A community member asked Sam Moku about the implementation of Senate Bill Thirty-One-Three-Nine as Act Eighty-Six, a new law. According to Sam Moku, he's excited about this new law because it will help remove, remove homeless individuals with mental health issues from the sidewalks in Honolulu. Sam Moku spoke about sidewalk ordinance enforcement and that HPD are receiving MH1 training to enforce the city's sidewalk ordinance where no one are allowed to build their encampment on the sidewalks in Honolulu. Sam Moku never spoke about removing encampments from the beaches on the west side. Basically, how it works is that HPD will be called when someone is living on the sidewalk in Honolulu. The bill clarifies when an HPD officer may gain control of the person and the procedures the officer shall take. According to Sam Moku, the MH1 training will allow the HPD officer to be a certified crisis intervention officer. If the trained and certified crisis intervention HPD officer has probable cause to believe that the homeless person is eminently dangerous to themself or to others, the homeless person shall be transported to a licensed psychiatric facility like Kahimohala or Kekele Ward or other facility designated by the Director of Health for further evaluation and possible emergency hospitalization. But other facility designated by the Director of Health may be a cleaning sober home, a group living home, et cetera, that is located in our community, Senate District Twenty-Two. According to Sam Moku, this will help free up our hospitals from being overused by homeless individuals with mental health issues. It's very costly when they stay in the hospital, according to Mr. Moku, and they also take up beds in the hospital. According to this new law, in any event, the homeless patient shall be released within forty-eight hours of the patient's admission to a psychiatric facility or other facility designated by the Director of Health, as I mentioned earlier, unless the patient voluntary agrees to further hospitalization in the hos, in the facility, not the hospital, the facility. In other words, HPD removes a homeless person on a sidewalk encampment in Honolulu, brings them to a group living home facility in Miley, Wainai, Nanakuli, Makaha, designated by the Director of Health to be the other facility. They stay at this group living home facility for forty-eight hours. Then they are discharged into our community. The person that forty-eight hours ago was deemed eminently dangerous to themself and to others are discharged from the group living home facility. So my questions. Number one, how many days or months does it take HPD to give an officer MH1 training? Number two, are you requiring all officers to receive MH1 training? Number three, is HPD going to use this law to also take homeless people with mental health issues from beach encampments along the west side or just sidewalk encampments in Honolulu? And number four, my last question, how do the HPD officers feel about having another issue added to their long list of work duties?
Okay, uh, let me try to take them one at a time. Your first question again was, let me do them one at a time. Your first question was... Well, your first question, I'm gonna do it one at a time. So your first question was...
My first question was, how many days or months does it take HPD to give an officer MH1 training?
Uh, every officer is trained actually through the academy, and then we do receive annual recall training regarding mental health issues. The officers are not trained to become psychologists. What the officers are trained to do is to speak to individuals, and if the individual says or does things that we believe that they could be a harm to themselves or someone else, we then contact a police psychologist. We inform them of the situation, what's being said and what's being done. And at that time, the police psychologist is the one that will, will decide whether or not this person needs to be taken in for an MH1. To be honest, this MH1 procedure is nothing new. We've been doing it since I've been in the PC department for twenty-five years. It's nothing new. Now, the question is, it seems like it's being brought up because it's talking about the homeless. The thing is, whether you have a home or not, if you appear to be a danger to yourself, we can arrest you and take you to the hospital under the MH1, uh, mental health evaluation criteria and take you to the hospital. Right now, those individuals are taken to either Queens or Castle. When they're transported to Queens or Castle, once they're released, they are also released into those areas. We don't go back and pick them up and bring them back. So, um, the concern that, oh, they're being brought from other districts into our district, uh, we're actually doing the same thing. We're taking them to Castle in town. I mean, Castle in Kanyi. Or we're taking them to Queens in town. And at that time, they're being evaluated. And then, uh, if they are deemed to be, uh, able to be released, they're released there.
Corporal Pagan, I'm gonna send you the video of the Makali Mo'ili'i neighborhood board meeting where Sam Moku did not say they're gonna go to a hospital. What you just shared is, was a current law. There was a current law that what you just explained is implemented with that current law. But what happened in the legislature, and I don't know if you're aware of it, but during twenty-twenty-four legislature, Senate Bill Thirty-One-Three-Nine, you need to look at the verbiage. And the verbiage says that they're gonna train HPD. The original, uh, the first time that the bill was presented, yes, an intervention worker was gonna come to HPD when they called them. Okay, so that was the first component. But according to the last version of, that went into law, HPD is gonna get training, which Sam Moku had verified. The other thing, and maybe our Governor's rep and our Mayor's rep can also confirm this. The other thing is that what was added to the current law, because you're mentioning the law that says you take them to a hospital. But Act Eighty-Six added other facility. So the Director of the Department of Health is gonna be tasked and has the freedom to designate other facilities. And examples were given. Because what you were saying earlier is true. You guys don't have training, you don't have psychiatric. That was one of the testifiers, an intern, that had stated that in the very first committee meeting in the Senate. That was stated, that we're concerned that our HPD officers, but also you guys have gun, you guys have tasers. A person in a mental health condition, they're not, they're gonna look at you as a threat. So my concern is that there's a misunderstanding of this issue. But I'll send you the video of what Sam Moku told the community in Makali and Mo'ili'i when the community member had asked for clarification about Senate Bill Thirty-One-Three-Nine, which turned into Act Eighty-Six. Mahalo.
Thank you, Corporal Pagan. If you wanna give a really short response to that, I don't know if you can summarize. We can carry it on with the Mayor's rep, uh, or we can take this conversation offline.
Yeah, uh, just, just real quick. Again, the, the change in the law may be where they're taken to other than the hospital and the, um, being able to take it to a group home. Uh, the other question about, um, how do officers feel about the task that is being handed to them with this? Again, if, if we're directed to do it, we're gonna do it. You know, once, once the laws are passed and, and, uh, there's a curriculum and decided and built, uh, then officers will be trained accordingly. Uh, I'm not sure, other than that, what the other questions were as far as how I could answer them, but, um, that may be somebody for the Mayor's rep, or the Governor's rep.
Okay, I will ask the Governor that question and the Mayor's rep that question so the Mayor can ask if it's gonna be a beach encampment ordinance as well that's gonna be enforced by HPD or just a sidewalks. But Corporal Pagan, um, I, I think this is an issue that I should take up with SHOPO because I think that your union, uh, or the, the SHOPO should support the HPD because in addition to the fact that you have a taser, you have a, and, and like the testifier stated, this is gonna be a dangerous situation. I think that everyone should really look into this more. So I'm just gonna carry on.
I, I do understand, and, and you're, you're more than welcome to, to discuss it with you. You know, but the thing is, you know, to be honest, everywhere we go, we have a taser and a gun. And, and you know, when EMS responds to mental health crisis instances, a lot of times, they will wait for us as well. So it won't be something like, oh, just the ambulance will go or the psychologist will go. I'm sure they'll be calling us just the same. So, uh, it won't remove us from those scenes. We may not be the primary when we get there, but we will be at the scene. Because again, EMS, uh, at times HFD, uh, even CORE, when they respond and there's a mental health issue, uh, they don't go in alone. So, um, you know, that, that wouldn't change any of our responses to any of these types of instances.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Corporal Pagan. Thank you, Board Member Myers. Uh, Board, oh, Board Member Augustine.
Thank you. So my question is if you can send us a written detailed report of the crimes that were reported at the Kalani Ho'okaha Village within a month leading up to the horrendous crime that was committed at Wendy's. And that report will be helpful, being that, um, they don't have mall security at this location. And in multiple situations, being there, I've reported crimes being committed in vandalism and assault. And so I would like to support this family that had to, um, there, you know, a victim was subjected to the neglect of security being present at this area. So if you can, please provide us with a report of how many crimes were reported to HPD within a month's time at the Kalani Ho'okaha facility. Thank you.
Okay, I can, I can get you the, uh, service calls for that area. However, I hope you do understand that mall security is the responsibility of the mall and the private property owner. It's not HPD's responsibility to provide security at these establishments. And if they did have an increase of issues, um, then that may have been something that they should have addressed, um, whether it's calling HPD when these people are, things are happening or increasing their security. So, uh, but I'll get you the calls for service for that area.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, I just wanted to apologize. That dialogue went a little bit longer than expected. Uh, I'm used to hearing kind of the ringer go off and the timer. So Board Member Hano Hano will be keeping time from this point moving forward, so we're gonna stick to that. But, uh, oh, sorry. By the way, you're gonna keep time. Okay, very good. Uh, Board members, any other questions? If not, we're gonna go over to community. Community, any questions for HPD? Go ahead, up to the microphone. Please state your name for the minute. Thank you.
Hello, Austin Sossia, I'll speak. I'm just gonna echo what the Board Member Jermaine Myers has spoken about. It is, uh, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four that the Mayor had approved and assigned this, this Act Eighty-Six, Senate Bill Thirty-One-Three-Nine. I don't think the, the HPD Commissioners has been aware of this Act Eighty-Six. I don't know if there's any collaboration. I've been following up with, uh, listening to the Commissioners, uh, reports, and I haven't heard of this. So Pig, uh, Corporal Pagan, please, uh, you're the representative for HPD. Please alert the Commissioners of this Act Eighty-Six. And also, I'm aware that last year I had asked a question, does HPD, and you responded, no. You folks have no idea where all this, uh, drug treatment, transitional group living housing is at because it's by the State Department of Health. So I hope we have our Senator in, in, online over here, our, uh, House Representative, both forty-four and forty-five, and our City Councilwoman, Andrew Topola, because this is an issue that's, we are suffering of the bad behavior that's occurring in the nine-six-seven-nine-two, Senate District Twenty-Two. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Hold on one second. We're gonna restart the time. Go ahead, up to the microphone. State your name for the minute.
Kurt Fivella. I just wanna echo the Board Member, um, Corporal Pagan. You didn't hear, um, everybody in this community know that that mall don't have security. So as the Board can get together, we're in public safety or whatever positions they have here on the Board, they can make a request to Kali Watson, um, Hawaiian Homes, to bring security that is long overdue at that mall. When they first opened the mall, all the, all the wagons was borrowed and took around the community. So with HPD working with the Board, can you guys advocate to the owners of the property and whoever managing it to please protect our community? And if we can add security or cameras, what they're doing in Ever Beach Shopping Center, they have cameras nighttime when you go over there, tells you to leave. I don't know how affected that is, but you know, at least we have something that we can protect the community. Right now, they're vulnerable, and, and it was a, it was a very, very, uh, tragic situation that shouldn't have happened. Okay, thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, community, any more questions for HPD? If not, anybody online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing done, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Thank you very much, Corporal Pagan. Sergeant Fumi, please be safe out there. Thank you so much for all that you do. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to filling a vacancy. We do have a vacancy, so at this time, we're gonna go ahead and ask for, uh, any nominations or anyone that wants to volunteer to, oh, go ahead, uh, Board Member Corona.
Y'all nominate Gary Shin Sato.
Gary Shin Sato. Board members, any other nominations? Board Member Iyo.
Mr. Mark Kong, Nanakuli.
Okay, Mr. Mark Kong, Nanakuli. Would any, uh, members of the public like to volunteer to fill our vacancy at our Neighborhood Board? As you can see, we're very lively over here. It's always exciting at our Neighborhood Boards. Okay? All right, well, seeing none, I guess we're gonna go ahead and take the vote. So I'll go ahead and give it over to, um, Jeffrey.
So with the, with the two, um, residents, um, sharing about themselves the last meeting, uh, I'll just take up the roll call vote. Uh, for the record, the individual amongst the... For the record, the individual amongst the board, please say their first or last name. And they have to receive the quorum vote of five to fill the vacancy. If they do receive the quorum vote, we could take a short recess. I can give them their, their board member materials, swear them in, and they could join the board for the rest of the meeting. Is anybody on the board, is there any questions before I continue? Okay. Board Member IO. Board Member Augustine.
Kong.
Board Member Tectora, I know that you're online, would you be able to participate in the vote if you're by your camera?
Uh, yes, for Mark Kong.
Thank you. Chair of Court.
Mark Kong.
Board Member Myers.
Shinzato.
Board Member Corona.
Shinzato.
Board Member Naomi Hanohano. And Board Member Ed Hanohano.
Okay, that, we don't want that on the record. What?
Either Kong or Shinzato for the filling of vacancy. Well, we have an, an even four-four split amongst the board members. If you would like to do a second roll call vote, and if no one gets the quorum vote, we can advertise it at the next board meeting. Would you like to take a second roll call vote? Okay, we're going to do a vote for the second time. Again, Board Member IO. Board Member Augustine.
Kong.
Board Member Tectora, online. Board Member Tectora. You're muted, you're trying. Thank you. Chair of Court. Board Member Myers.
Shinzato.
Board Member Corona.
Shinzato.
Board Member Naomi Hanohano. And Board Member Ed Hanohano. Then it's an even, even split through two roll call votes. The vacancy will be advertised at the November twenty-twenty-four meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for those that were nominated. I encourage you to please come back. Where's Shinzato? Oh, there he is. Please come back next month and continue to stay engaged with us. You're more than welcome to attend our committee meetings to get more engaged with our community. But thank you very much. Thank you for, Board Members, for your nominations. We're going to move on to community concerns. Community concerns, please line up to the microphone to state your concern. Those that are joining us virtually, please raise your virtual hand. And when I see you raise your hand after we're done here, in person, I will go over to virtual. So go ahead. Oh, hold on one second. Okay? Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Aaron, Aaron Konyaklo. Okay, uh, there's been a lot of violence in when I, and, you know, Wendy's, that's just one part of the whole Wa'ani. And I feel bad for the whole shopping center. And I was there when it started, not the incident, but the shopping center was built. It was used for first responders, were always there. Except when they had to go home and it turned into a party, a party place. So it's a, it's the whole shopping centers problem. And they got, looks like they had lots of money to, if it was helping the homeless or helping themselves. So that man was challenged, escorted out a customer. And I'm just saying that you challenge me, you work McDonald's, you challenge me and we go outside and something happens. Wendy's is at fault.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Board Member Myers, you had a community concern. Community, if you do have any other concerns, please go to the microphone.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I was, I wanted to clarify that I will send the concerns that was expressed about the mall to Rep Keela, because he told us that he's conversing with Kali Watson. So I'll go ahead and forward your guys' concerns to our Representative Keela. My community concern, so as a concerned citizen, we were given a presentation in August by the HONU, by city. So, yeah, this is a community concern, yeah. So, yeah, so we were given a HONU presentation. And I, I went to the, the second to the last page, the one before mahalo. And I know I read it that night, so I just wanted to bring it back into awareness about the statistics that were shared with us. So the reason why, because some people in the community have been coming up to me and asking me why I don't support the HONU project. And so I want to highlight this. So in Nanikai Beach Park, from April first to July twenty-eighth, that was, that's almost a hundred and twenty days, okay? They took in a hundred and forty-five individuals that went to the HONU shelter. Okay, one hundred and forty-five. They have seventeen employees. They're in our community for one hundred and twenty days, twenty-four hours a day. They provided beds for fifty individuals. But they took in, or they served, that's what they mean, served a hundred and forty-five individuals. Out of that hundred and forty-five, they only placed eighty of them. So they put sixty-five in shelter, three at the hospital for treatment. Three, they relocated off island. Five, they reunited with their family. And four, they gave permanent housing, they helped with get permanent housing. That's total of eighty. That means sixty-five of our homeless individuals that went to the HONU encampment was sent back out to the, the community, did not get placement. So that is why I am concerned of the ineffectiveness. And I'd like us to work with the mayor's rep and the city in revamping this program.
Okay.
Okay?
We can continue when Erwin comes up. Thank you, thank you. Okay, oh, very good, go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
Elizabeth Dixon, good evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. I have a special announcement. Georgette's Beauty Emporium will be open again for one night only at TAG, which is down at the Dole Cannery. We have two readings for National Caregivers Month. We are doing the Super Executive Antis of the Malama Caregivers Collective again, but we are doing it different. Everybody will be on stage and it will be done like a radio style. That will be on Saturday night, November the second, at seven-thirty PM. And one of our authors, who's also involved in that play, she took her journal that she wrote about her husband's dealing with Alzheimer's, turned it into a book, and we are doing a reading of that called No One Is Prepared for Alzheimer's: One Family Story. And that will be Sunday, November third, at two-thirty in the afternoon, also at TAG. So there will be three members from our community, myself, Georgette, Georgette Stevens and Kayla Ford. The three of us will all be involved in the play again. So if anybody can come, I will leave some flyers on the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. Okay, community concerns? Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Jeremiah Magalones. It's an announcement and a community concern, but we are actually hosting a haunted, a community haunted house up in Hakemo Road, eight-seven-eight-two-eight Hakemo Road. It'll be on October twenty-fifth, and it's open to the community free of charge. It's a community concern because there's not too much outlets for our Kiki and our community to go out and be a community. You know, you, you have to have some place where you can connect with your community, not just go out and just go hold on, hold on. So we are holding it there. This is our response to the gun violence and outlaw violence in the community, because it gives our community something to do. It gives our community something to think about instead of be going out into the community and making bad decisions. So, and then my sister and Nicholas will, Lucas will give more information about that.
Great, very good, thank you very much.
Aloha. My name is Taren, and we'll be having Ohana night, the same night as the haunted house. We'll be having refreshments and activities for our Kiki.
Aloha, I'm Lucas. Some of the activities that will be hosted is face paintings, coloring contests, costume contests, petting zoos and photo booths.
And we are actually also accepting donations if you guys would like to help support our, our activity. We're accepting money donations, food donations, prize donations, whatever you guys feel like donating. We're open to everything. You guys can contact us at hanaykayulu on Instagram. Hakemo Road, Hakemo Road, eight-seven-eight-two-eight, right across the onion farm, the green onion farm. So yeah, once again, it's free to the community and everybody is welcome. And mahalo.
Thank you. Sorry, Jeremiah, Jeremiah, sorry, what was that email address again? Or how do we contact you to?
Hanaykayulu on Instagram. And, and the address is eight-seven-eight-two-eight Hakemo Road.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now is the time, communities, to get behind our OPIO. Yes, thank you. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Aloha, my name is Kiara, and I'm in eleventh grade in Nanakuli High Intermediate. And we are also holding another event after the haunted house, which is an OPIO Ma'keke Children's Business Fair. And we are holding this event because we need some positivity in our community. For the past months, we've been having violence and such negativity in the West Side that we need to get our minds off of such things, especially for the Kiki. So we are holding this event so the kids can use their creativity and create their own products that they can sell. And whatever they sell, their money goes to themselves. And it can help them with learning, having a little bit of touch in entrepreneurship, learn about like making their own money, financial, all of that. So we'll be having it at the Kamahama Learning Center near Long Strugs at ten o'clock to two PM. And we will have entertainment, food, vendors and an art gallery. So we will have open mic where you can come sing, play instrument, you know, recite poems, anything. And then our art gallery is, will be held with, by the students in our art class in Nanakuli High Intermediate. And the vendors will be held by Kiki themselves. So they can also learn how to, you know, manage their products and their, whatever they're making. And, yeah, so it's, it's an amazing way where they can, you know, interact with others and with themselves and just get their minds off of all the bad that's been happening on the West Side. And, thank you. Huh? Oh, oh, the date will be in November sixty, November sixteenth, ten to two PM at the Kamahama Learning Center near Long Strugs. And if you have any questions or you want any of your childrens to be a vendor, it's nineteen-nineteen, you can contact hanaykayulu@gmail.com. Thank you. Mahalo.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
Awesome, no questions.
Any questions?
No. But thank you very much. It's so good and so refreshing to see our HOMA come out to these community meetings and get engaged, making sure that their voices are heard. So thank you very much for those great community concerns and invitations. Go ahead.
She did a good speech, I can't, I can't top that off, you know what I mean? But anyway, this is regarding actually the, the safety hazards that's in among the Senate District Twenty-two that we, we kind of confronted with. But this particular issues that I'm bringing up, I just want to make sure everybody can understand that. That did all this drugs treatment and all this group living, all that is potentially put in a proximity, close proximity of a school throughout our West Side over here. And this act that, Act eighty-six, that our, our governor had signed off this year, kind of puts this situation in, because the Department of Health, I have a certificate of need that was issued out and by the State Health Planning and Development Agency, May fifth, twenty twenty-one, two of them. This thing had been given to an operation that's operating from downtown to Macau, making awareness. I brought it to the neighborhood board. It allowed, actually, it had disadvantaged our City Councilwoman because they had put language in here that for the certificate of need was issued, but there is no compelling public interest in which it will be served by requiring the application to go through the standard review process. It denied our City Councilwoman and her community that she represent, denied the opportunity to provide testimony. And this is by the Department, State Department of Health. There's a deficiency. Does everybody understand that part? So through the State Department of Health, doing this Act eighty-six, I'm very questionable how their movement's going to be. Because it's going to deny our area for public testimony before the neighborhood boards and all of us. So I questioned the protocols that they do. But Andrew Topola needs to jump on this, because it did deny her the due, uh, due process protocol in representing her, her community that she serves, that denies us by the Department of Health affiliation of this State Health and Planning Development Agency. So right now, I'm doing transmittals with the Department of Health, but nobody had required me because I made a notification about the currentness property. The same person who's operating in Fort Street Mall, her partners had cited her accusing her of forgery.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have, making awareness.
Thank you, thank you for that information. Corporal, oh, go ahead, go ahead. One moment, Corporal.
Aloha, Kumho Piper from Nanakuli. I am, my community concern is the wellness of our Kiki that cross the street from Kauai Hona and they end up at Kainalu, Wendy's, Starbucks, and even in Wa'ani. We know our homeless needs phone charging stations, and a lot of them go into these places for that specific reason. So like Wa'ani and other places in the island, they have the portable showers that gets moved around from place to place. Maybe we can work with some kind of organization to get some solar charging stations set in places and in malls for these houseless people that need, want to charge their phones. So I feel like that's the problem too, a lot of them go into these places, like the places where our Kiki are. They're crossing the street, they're hanging out over here, waiting for the bus, waiting for Ohana. And we got to keep our kids safe. So suggestion, mahalo, aloha.
Thank you, thank you very much. One second, we have another in-person. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Kurt Fivella. I don't know if everybody got this paper from OHA. It's Kauai Ola. You guys didn't get it going to get the PDF, I just wanted to let you know about this. It was really catchy because they came out with, um, the guys who wrote this article was very significant for the area, because it talks about environmental risk in Nanakuli. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but when they built the landfill back in nineteen eighty-two, over fifty percent of the people that was living in the area was native Hawaiian. A lot of people don't understand, when they built the landfill, had homes right next to the landfill, but they still had built it, knowing that it was going to cause the ailment. You guys can read the article because it's, it's a good read. But the problem is right now that they cannot find another landfill. And I want you guys to remember this, they want to amend Act seventy-three. Act seventy-three is what, when we was in water and land, had made a buffer zone, no schools, no farms, no whatever. But because they're having a hard time with that law, they wanted to amend it. So I went to the, to the, um, meeting and, and I told them that I would never support it, as long as I'm there and I get a chance to testify, I'll never support amending Act seventy-three. And why is it important to our community? Because if they amended, the next landfill would be very specific worry. So we don't need any more landfills in our community. We need to shut down the ones we have and figure out what we can do by having better opportunities for our family and not be sick and growing over. Everybody know Federer came out and set the standards between twenty to ten years short-lived in this community, one point eight miles by any landfill. So just if you guys can, go look them up. It's, it has, it has a PDF you can download, has a lot of information about Nanakuli and landfills. Thank you, guys. God bless.
Thank you very much. Oh, one more in-person, go ahead.
Gary Shinzato. I was wondering if it's possible to get a representative from Hawaiian Electric to actually attend the meeting. Last month, we had two blockouts in our area, one on September fourth, around four o'clock, that lasted about an hour. And then a week later, we had one that was about eight o'clock in the morning, that lasted about an hour. And then a week later, we had one that was about 8 o'clock in the morning that lasted about an hour. It was consistent on the blackout, so didn't get any response back from Hawaiian Electric on why it happened. And being that it was about approximately one hour long on both occasions, you know, it kind of leads me to believe, but I want them to tell me that if it was a planned blackout because during the day, you know, they was making claims. And that's important because right now we building under the emergency proclamation, all this affordable housing. I understand about affordable housing, we need affordable housing, but you also got to look into if our utilities can handle with the influx of building. Our electricity, our groundwater, they closing two wells, Aia and Palava, as well as the sewage plant. I'm not sure if they got one upgrade. I know Santa Island did get an upgrade. I was part of the disinfection upgrade as well as the expansion phase one. But none of the wastewater in Hawaii right now conforms to the EPA's requirement for primary treatment to take offshore. So that's a concern with all this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Gary. We're going to go ahead and move online now. Corporal Pagan, I saw your hand first and then Johnny May, you can go after Corporal Pagan. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yes, it's a board member Jermaine brought it up. I did want to mention that the honu is in Kapali at the moment. We do ask that the board support the honu, dealing with the homeless. Many of you don't realize that when you're working with the homeless, a lot of them don't want to go and get help unless it's in their area. A lot of them don't want to leave Nanakuli, don't want to leave Waianae. So in order for us to get them the services, we need to bring the services to them. You know, she mentioned that 80 people were serviced, but another 80 or so were not. It is important to understand that unlike what she said, they weren't pushed up. When you go to the honu, it's voluntary. You go there, it gives us the opportunity to work with you. If you violate the rules, if you, if you decide that you don't want to do it, that's your decision. You know, people have been evicted because, you know, they bought drugs or alcohol into the honu itself, but we don't throw people back onto the streets because we don't want to help them. So it's important to understand that, you know, our homeless are people and, and just like every one of us, we have our choices to make. And when they come out there and they make their choices, if their choice is not to get back on into housing or get treatment, then unfortunately, that's where we need the board's support in pushing for enforcement as well. So again, I just want to make sure that people understood that, you know, dealing with getting 80 people housed is a big deal. That's 80 people off the streets. So it's nothing to be slapped at or to just push aside. Yeah, we want our numbers to be better, but again, we don't want to shut the program down or not support it just because we were not hitting 100%. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go over to Johnny May Perry and then we'll come back to in-person. Go ahead, Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you Chair. It was mentioned about accommodating unsheltered people to charge their phone at fast food place. It's not for the businesses to accommodate everybody to charge their phones. I am really surprised that on Nanakuli Mall, there is no security when Kamakana Alii, which is the property owned by DHHL, that the Nanakuli does not have security. But you know, unfortunately, whatever happened, it happened. What didn't happen is picking up their phone and calling 911. That should have been the first approach. Call 911. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, in-person, state your name for the minutes, please.
Aloha, Kalaiso Sero. You know, I'm hearing about, you know, the rights of the homeless encampments and stuff like that. And it's the choice that they make. But you know what? What about the honest taxpayers? What about the children? What about the kapunas? They have no choice when they being, you know, nitpicked on constantly. Honest taxpayers, workers, that mall was owned, was working, honest living, working. They're not out there. That kid was not out there buying handouts. Why every day what we have on our beaches is handouts? And nothing's going to be corrected if the government do not take actions. And when the taxpayer people or when people get angry, they take action. Remember what the mayor said, what you and your committee going to do? That's unethical behavior of the mayor's statement. And now you got the governor saying this is not an emergency proclamation thing. You use an emergency proclamation when it got to do with safety, community, safety. You're compromising our safety, our rights to enjoy our beaches, to enjoy our malls, for the kids to walk to school safe. You're compromising our safety. That's the problem we have it. Whether it's the mayor or the governor, they talk about the golden pen, use it for protect the people hardworking, my kapunas, the children, don't use it to protect the beaches only. I'm tired of dishing out more taxpayer money for handouts. You guys created the problem. You guys fix the problem. And that's the mayor and governor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Board Member Agastya, a community concern.
Aloha. So the community concern that I have is in relation to the food distribution with the Hawaii keke program. There was canned food that was being passed out that had a warning sign on it and I'm going to read the label. It says consuming this product can expose you to chemicals including bisphenol A, which is BPA known, which is known in the state of California to cause cancer and birth defects or other reproductive harm. And it, this product is green acres diced pears. And I'll show the image in a minute. But it's just a for us to understand that what we consume can really impact our bodies and it's a public health concern. And so if you're a ramen noodle eater, there's another product that's on sale in the shopping centers. You can buy it at Long's, you can buy it at Walmart. It's the Sapporo Ichiban Ramen Noodles. And I'm going to read the nutrition fact also says, warning, consuming this product can expose you to chemicals including lead, which are known to the state of California to cause cancer and birth defects or other reproductive harm. So just please be mindful of the products that you're consuming because we have a lot of health disparities and we're a low socioeconomic community that we take handouts and we take the food that we can access, but not every food is meant to, to be absorbed and be helpful to our bodies. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Gosh, that just ruined my night right there. Oh goodness, but yes, we do have to be mindful of our health. Okay, I see no other community concerns, none online, so we're going to go ahead and move on. We are very honored this evening to have a room filled with our opio, with our haumana. And you know, I think it's important that we as a board continue to be inclusive with our younger generation. And so at this time, we do have a presentation from the 8th grade students of Kauaihona Okana'au Public Charter School. And they are going to give us a report of the coconut rhinoceros beetle here in Nanakuli. So please go to the microphone, talk loud and clear and state your name.
Aloha, my name is Maverick Mahuka. And we are here to represent the 8th grade of Kauaihona Okana'au. This school year, we learned about CRB and their problem in our community. This is our presentation on the CRB problem and how we can fix it. CRB, also known as coconut rhinoceros beetle, has damaged our trees such as coconut trees, lauha'ala trees, and palm trees.
Hi, my name is Reza Anderson. So during quarter one, we went to, we did a puakaki up the valley, walking each road and taking data and surveying how many trees we could see from like the street on each property and what they had, like we could try to spot if they had any signs of the damage of coconut rhinoceros beetles. And then after that, we walked back down to our campus and then we calculated all the data we got together as our grade level. And then we made graphs and figured out how much total there were and how many were affected.
Aloha, my name is Kylie Suzo. We kilo are Nanakuli Valley from Kula up to Haleakala Ave. Also, our class explored each roads from Pilila'au, 6th Road, Kaval, 5th Road, Kauvahi, 4th Road, Mano, 3rd Road, Lepeka, 2nd Road, Ampua, 1st Road. Lastly, we made our way down Nanakuli Ave, then we made our way back to Kula to map our data collection.
Can you go to the fifth slide?
Yeah. Aloha, my name is Kylie Teo. Okay, on this slide, you can see that we took data. This is data that we took on top of our Ave and data we took in school. In the valley, we had 116 total coconut rhinoceros beetle. Out of the 116, 96 were infected. That makes 83%. 83% of the coconut on our Ave infected. Next slide. In conclusion, what can we as a community do to help us prevent CRB infestation and restore our kumuneo in our valley? And these are some solutions that we came up and scoop.
Hello, my name is Micah Suie. I'm the 8th grade Kumho. We decided to do a service project, something in which we would kind of have a greater impact on our community. So we decided to try and tackle this CRB problem. Like we, we said, there was a total of 116 coconut trees that we counted from 1st to 6th Road. Out of those 116, 96 are infected or have CRB in them from what we could see. That's 83%. We're going to do this survey again in May and we're going to share out again and we just, one of our main reasons for this is just to bring awareness to our community. I wanted to ask the board if there's any like nonprofit organizations that we could reach out to to kind of help these families in the valley because plenty of them don't really know that their trees are, have this kind of stuff. And some of those community members are just too old to go outside and cut down their tree and all that kind of stuff. And we don't want to do that. So kind of our, our thing was just raising awareness and seeing what can we do as a community? What kind of nonprofit organizations are out there that could help our community without money coming out of our community members pockets? So yeah, that's why we're here and we want to say mahalo for hearing us out.
Okay, well, great presentation. First of all, let's give them a round of applause. They did such a great job, very thorough, very detailed. Lots of hard work. We'll have you stay up there. At this time, I'm going to open it up to questions. Board Member Corona and then Board Member Myers.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation, great work. And it's just the fact of going through and going back and seeing any further impacts up the avenue or even throughout the whole coast because I've seen it in my league as well. So I, I got two, one comment and two, one feedback on this is your data that you're collecting, are you providing that to anybody at the state, like the Department of Agriculture or DLR?
So right now, you guys are the only ones we've kind of shared this out with. We've reached out to our pool, our pool Kumho, we asked him and he said, he pointed us in your guys' direction. So if you guys want us to email this data to them, we can do that as well. We just, we just wanted to share with our community first. And then from there, we're hoping like your suggestion in having us email it to other people and let them know.
And the reason why I'm asking, I'm saying that is because I don't remember when, I think it was back in, maybe someone on the board can help me out here, back in February, maybe we had a, the state had hired or contracted an organization to kind of do some, some work with the coconut rhinoceros beetle. And when we asked them a lot of questions, because we've noticed it throughout this whole entire coast, how we're getting impacted. And the response we were given from them was that they're only contracted to deal with the ports. They weren't dealt, they weren't contracted other than providing information to the outlying communities. So now at, now fast forward now several months, you've got the state stating now that there's a terrible infestation problem on this island and it's impacting the other islands now. And now they've stopped sending soil and dirt and stuff over to the other islands. So when they were reporting it back to us back then, we were telling them that there's an issue going on out here. We let the state know about it. However, the state, in my opinion, didn't feel it was important enough. And now that we're at now. And so your data is going to help out. So it's going to be in our agenda minutes from earlier in the year. I'm going to find that while we're still sitting here. And then I'm going to give you the name. I don't know if they're still contracted with the state or not. But maybe that's something that we can follow up on for next month's meeting or something like that. But I'll find that out for you. But thank you. Great job. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board Member Myers.
Thank you Chair. Jeffrey, can you go back and put up the slide again and go to the one with the tables? I have a question. Yeah, they're right there. Okay. The highest one was the pink. Is that Puakau? Is that 4th Road or 5th?
I have the numbers on my phone and I can give you guys the exact numbers breakdown by road.
But the one with the most was the pink one with 5th Road? Is that 5th Road? Wait, 4th, 2nd, 4th, 5th Road?
Okay, so our, this is our numbers that we have. So 5th Road, there were 31 total coconut trees we counted, 29 of them are infected. And I can give you the rest. So 1st Road, there are 22 coconut trees, 20 infected. 2nd Road, 5 coconut trees, 4 infected. 3rd Road, 29 coconut trees, 21 infected. 4th Road, 18 coconut trees, 11 infected. And 6th Road, 11 coconut trees and 11 infected. We only had time to walk up to 6th Road. That's why we didn't go past that. So there's no, we didn't, weren't able to collect data on those ones.
Nice. My question has to do with your request about getting funding, grant funding. So tomorrow I'm going to be going to OHA's meeting. And on Thursday, they have the Oahu Islandwide Community Meeting, which they address issues that are related to Oahu. So I can ask OHA, no promises, so about a grant for, from a nonprofit, they can connect us with someone. But my question to you regarding the grant, what specifically do you want to do with the funding?
I'm, I'm just thinking that there's some sort of like
Did you want to replace the trees?
Um, maybe just help these ohana decide what they want to do. Because some of these trees are, it just looks real bad. I don't know if there's any saving because like I'm still brand new learning about this. So I, I don't know if you can save some of these trees or not. Maybe this is where we can bring in experts and they can kind of let us know. And they can help these families figure out what they want to do. Because some, they might tell you and come up and be like, we cannot save your tree. But they don't have the money to cut it down. Maybe we can do something about that cleanup. I'm not too sure. I just wanted to raise awareness and see what can we do to help these families out.
Okay, okay. Can you give us your email address so that we can connect with you as far as to follow up with more questions about the grant, if OHA has any?
Yeah, it's M A H S U I at kauaihona pcs.org.
Okay, and then I'll play the video of tonight's meeting to them if they want to see more information of what you guys did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Board Member Agastya.
Mahalo, I'd like to invite you to our Land and Water Committee meeting. It happens on every first Thursday of each month. So this upcoming is going to be November 7th from 6 to 8:00 PM at the Kalani Anaole Beach Park. And there is an organization that usually attends Aloha Carbon. And they turn green waste into energy. And they may be a resource that we can work with to take some of the, if the families decide to get rid of the coconut tree, take some of the wastes off. So it's just transportation of the product will be up to the families. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So, that graph was a data of the trees that are dead?
So, that graph was just, the students were learning about data collection and creating their own graphs. So some of them were just, their graphs had like, these are the amount of trees that were dying. Another graph on there were of the trees on campus, like our, our example we did first. So, I can send you the correct numbers and stuff.
Yeah, and if you can include the trees that are salvageable, that would be good. You said that there were sixty-nine trees, oh no, sixty-nine trees that were affected. You did a total of one hundred sixteen trees and sixty-nine trees were affected.
So...
If you can send us the breakdown of the trees that are salvageable.
Yeah, so ninety-six trees infected, one hundred sixteen totals, that's twenty between. But we didn't mark down which row, which houses had the salvageable ones. Yeah, we, we weren't at that point yet. When we go, when we do this again in May, we'll be adding on these kind of things.
Well, that, that's a good pointer for the next time you do your report. Track which ones are good, so we know which ones to target.
Okay, we will do that in May.
Great, hold that thought. Community, do you have any questions for Kawaihona? Oh, go ahead, Board Member Ayo.
Which one of the students there walked down Second Road?
Any of you guys went Second Road that day? Oh, oh, had the other grade level, seven grade. So we had eighth graders and one seventh grade class.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to know who walked down Second Road.
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead, we have in person and then I'm gonna get to you, Johnny May, in a minute, thank you so much.
There was a grant, I work with the state. So the Department of Agriculture did have grants earlier this year that they provided to nonprofits that applied for them. All of them are gone by June. The Department of Agriculture said that they would be providing additional grants for nonprofits that want to apply for them. I'm gonna find out the status of those grants and then report next month on that.
Great, thank you very much. That's the governor's rep, so he's got good information. I will go over to Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for that service activity for the, for your students. The number to call, if you could take it down, is eight oh eight six seven nine five two four four. The email is info, I N F O, at CRB Hawaii dot org. This has been a community awareness for a while now and by the state. And, and it's for the homeowners to decide what they want to do to, to, for them to problem solve. Your students had did a lot informing them and it's up to the individual homeowners what they want to do. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much, Johnny May. I think that's it, no more questions in person and no more online. Thank you very much, kumu, we appreciate you, we appreciate your humana for coming, thank you for your great work. Thank you.
Mahalo. Because it's a school night, we're gonna excuse ourselves from the meeting.
Yes.
Because it's a school night.
It's a school day.
Mahalo, thank you guys.
Very good, awesome, awesome, thank you so much. We're hoping to have more of this with our young ones present at these meetings, so. Great, okay, next presentation is Kuliana Coral, Alika Garcia. He has a coral, Kuliana Coral has a coral restoration project that they're doing in Nanakuli. So, thank you very much, I believe Jeffrey is pulling up your slides.
Oh, I'm up, everybody leaving. Hello, everybody, my name is Alika Garcia, from Waipahu. I'm the director of Kuliana Coral, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit. And we plant coral and do a lot of scientific monitoring on the south and west side of Oahu. Yeah, and I'm here today, we're talking about, we've been working with the Land and Water Board and talking about a project in Nanakuli. I guess to see if the community had any concerns, because we didn't want to start any work if there were concerns. Yeah, so I can go next. And kind of the way that we work is a community-based coral restoration area is what we call it. It's a map of Oahu, these are the areas we're working now. So we're working, yeah, again, most of the west and south Oahu. And kind of the idea is just that we're trying to create small pilot coral restoration sites that can inform the community of what the status of their reefs are and what can we do to improve them? And of course, to get the community involved in being a part of that. Very similar to, you know, the CRBs, right? We gotta take, take action, so that's the intention of this, driven by the community. Uh, next one, please. And the approach basically is that we partner with land-based organizations that are doing, you know, Malama work. Malama Learning Center is the one that we've been working with in Nanakuli. So they've been doing muli via restoration. So, you know, our belief is that the ahupua system made a lot of sense and to have people doing good work on land and protecting our watersheds protects our reef. So, we're not just protecting a reef and just hoping for the best, it's really a, you know, ahupua wide thing. So, Malama Learning has been a big partner in Nanakuli for us. Next one, please. And then, so we kind of have three phases of it and right now we're in phase one, is getting community consent. That, again, if you guys have any concerns that we don't want to, you know, be in your guys' backyard. You know, I've fished this area for most of my life, but I am from Waipahu, so this is your guys' backyard. So, yeah, let us know. And determining the goals of what we want to do is kind of the next step in a conversation with the community, with the board about what they want to see, right? So, next one, please. And kind of, if you can see this graph up here, kind of the goals that we like to work with, with our partners, is in these topics. So, I'll just go through a couple of them real quick and end on the most important or what we're hearing from the community, what they want the most. So ecological resilience is making coral that can stand up to high temperatures essentially, or high sediment or pollution. And that's just through growing the ones that are alive, no genetic manipulation or anything crazy like that, all natural stuff. Emergency response, so right now we're working outside of the Koalina area, outside of the Deep Draft Harbor. There is a ship grounding there that damaged like a whole football field worth of coral. So, emergency response should be basically responding and fixing that, that damage before it's no longer savable and we lose more of our coral reef. Coastal protection is a really big one, is that we build coral reefs to protect our coastal infrastructure, schools, power plants, roads. But the one that we hear from most of our communities, including Nanakuli, is fish habitat. How can we make more reef to make more fish? Or how can we prevent our reef from dying to just keep the fish we have? So those are kind of the two things, keep what we have, don't lose it or build more. Uh, next slide, please. And this is kind of the area that we're proposing, that we've scouted out, that we're, you know, we're asking for feedback on. So Nanakuli Stream right there, kind of comes out into that big sand channel, kind of hard to see on here, but that's Google Earth picture, so if you guys kind of want to see, it's outside there at about forty feet. And, yeah, if you're familiar with there. And then next slide has just some pictures of what that looks like. So this is the site, so a part of what we do is we just take really high resolution maps, hard to tell on here, but this is what the seafloor looks like and that's about the size of a basketball court. And what we're asking, you know, to do is to plant two hundred corals in this area by just taking ones that are already broken, we're not bringing anything in from other communities or other areas. We're just taking stuff right there that's broken and planting it right back on the reef. Uh, next slide, please. And phase two is kind of the part that's the funnest, is actually planting coral and that's something, again, that we want to start building more relationships with the community, is to have an event. We've done this, the picture on the bottom right is in Poka Ibe where we partner with Nakamakai, you know, doing kiki education, but that's something we can get hands-on to have the kids help us grow the coral and, you know, create a sense of ownership and just, of course, all the education that goes with it. Uh, next one, please. And this is just a real basic of what we do. And we can talk more if you have questions, but we take stuff that's already broken and we put stainless steel rod in the bottom, so that's, that is a foreign material coming in. And then we drill a hole into the seafloor and we just plant it in with epoxy, that's environmentally safe. They use it in fish tanks, so very stable stuff, not gonna, you know, hurt anything. We've done four thousand of these already across the south and west shores of Oahu and we have about maybe seventy-five to eighty percent success rate, so pretty good and doesn't hurt anything. Next one, please. And this is just another method that we do at the events, is fragment corals. We have the kids help us kind of cut them and then basically make baby corals that we'll plant out. Uh, next one, please. And then phase three, I think, is what I wanted, you know, to talk about and, you know, is the future the most, is long-term monitoring plans, is us working with the community to know what's going on with the reef and then come up with plans on how they want to manage it. So some things that came up in previous land and water meetings was about, you know, fishery management. And that's something we don't do, we inform and give that information to the community with a lot of data, but we don't do policymaking because we believe that the communities that are the most affected should be making those decisions. But this data is super important to inform those decisions on what happens with their fishery in their backyard. And the next one, please. And another thing that, you know, was brought up as a concern and a question is this program we have, which I can send more when we actually start recruiting. We just finished our second year of what we call the Coast Program, that's focused in West Oahu. EVA YNIMOKU is where we're taking eighteen and older and we're partnering with CNHA, Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement and funded by NOAA, the federal agency, to train our local kids in marine science, which is an extremely underrepresented field for our local kids. They're good paying jobs and you can stay in your backyard and take care of your reef. For me as a fisherman, I mean, cannot beat it. So, this program is funded, where we give people two thousand dollars to participate. We buy them equipment and we give them certifications that make them employable. So, they can come out, right now we're only at about a fifty percent employment rate, but we, we think that's pretty good for just two years of the program and it's been really successful. And I think, you know, I felt a little silly, I guess, coming to present on coral and I know there are so many big issues with the community. But this, to me, is a part of what we're talking about, right? Is something positive to do, something that builds our ecosystems, that gives me and the people that have been through this program pride, this program pride in our home and why we take care of it. And if you can create a job and make good money while doing it, even better, right? So, this pro, this program is really, really impactful and dedicated to people from West Oahu. Uh, next one, please. And the last slide is just scalable restoration. The point is, this is happening all over the state and as many of you know, the west side is often left out of funding issues and infrastructure issues. So as they're putting millions of dollars into this stuff to build reefs for coastal protection, fish habitat production, or emergencies, something breaks, fix it. We don't want our communities to be left out. So this small-scale, you know, like restoration starts the next step in conversation of what's going on and what solutions do we have and make sure that we have, you know, a voice in a conversation. And that's all I got. Uh, my email is alika@kulianacoral.org, it says dot com up there, but we switched it all to O R G because we're a nonprofit, but and our website is kulianacoral.org. Mahalo.
Very good, thank you very much, Alika. I'll open it up for questions, Board Members. Yes, give them a round of applause. That was a fast one, mahalo, oh wow, nine minutes. Awesome, got a record over here. Board Member Corona and then Board Member Myers.
Yes, please, just have a few comments and questions. So one, I think you answered already, you don't implant coral from other areas of the island, you use existing coral that's there.
Correct, yeah, and I mean, a big reason is like we're saying with the CRB and a lot of other issues is bringing in invasive species from other areas and disease. So we keep everything within the community of coral and we, yeah, we don't bring anything in for that reason.
All right, and then the targeted area, I was looking on your map there, so you're looking, right? Is, how, how far is it off, off, off land? All right, because, because I, I used to paddle there and the reef over there is nice, but it's closer to shore, it's nice, but are you talking further out?
It's about a hundred and fifty yards from shore, from the opening of the stream, of Nanakuli Stream.
Okay.
And in about forty feet of water.
All right, and then just two more, one, one, one ques, two kind of questions. One is, use like a rebar?
It's a stainless steel threaded rod, that's about an eighth of an inch thick.
So it doesn't deteriorate over time then?
It will slowly, but it's iron and like, as a volcanic island, we have a lot of iron in the water. So, the idea is that the coral live tissue would grow over it and you wouldn't see it within, you know, maybe two years, so.
And it won't deteriorate, the coral that you?
No, it won't, no.
And then my final comment is, do you have any partners in, for example, like H I M B at UH? I mean, that's a great partner right there, so who has a lot of funding and such to do, to help whatever they need. So do you have any partnerships or?
Yeah, H I M B is actually one of our core partners when we started. So that one I mentioned about ecological resilience, where we test corals that can handle high temperatures as our sea gets warmer. They're the main partner where they're doing a lot of the really heavy lifting scientifically and we are assisting on the implementation. So we did start that project on the west side, but more Kahai side. So we've already done, I believe, about two hundred and twenty corals where H I M B is testing them for thermal resilience.
Yeah, so to your, so before you plant, H I M B tests and then, okay.
They determine what are the stronger kind of candidates and then that can bring, you know, basically a stronger reef over time.
Good, thank you.
Very good, Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Mahalo for your presentation, I appreciate your efforts. Nanakuli Stream is what our local people call stink pond, it ends there. And so you said that, how far did you say that it's gonna go out, where you're gonna do this?
It's about a hundred and fifty yards.
Hundred fifty?
And we can provide you guys with the GPS coordinates, that is, yeah, but it's about a hundred and fifty yards.
A lot of our locals, they go out and swim, but we also have the rigata, the annual rigata, Father's Day. So, excuse me for my ignorance, I saw the picture where you have a stake that you drilled down into with the coral?
Yeah.
Have you ever had any of those things come up and then, you know, it's a sharp object? Has any of them uprooted, because I'm assuming it's gonna go into the sand?
We have, yeah. After really big swells, we've had maybe about five to ten percent of them come up, especially on the west side. Typically, what will happen is the whole coral will come out with that, you know, kind of like a lollipop, right? The stick at the bottom and then it'll just join the rest of the broken coral on the side. So, nothing really sticking up, I think, to be like that you would step on or get hurt. It's also, I think the shallowest site that we work at is about forty feet, so a little harder to get access to. But, yeah, that is a concern and I think as we monitor every six months, just to see how the coral's growing, if it's surviving, if we see any of that, we would remove it, yeah.
How long is a stake? The metal stake that is attached to the coral that you put into the, how long is the stake?
Uh, depends on the size of the coral, but they range from about, I think the longest ones we use are probably about eight inches, eight to ten inches at the longest, yeah, and then most probably average. Yeah, and each one is about four, four inches, maybe is the average, I would say.
Okay.
They're pretty small.
In that area, well, between Zabland and Nanakuli Beach Park, there's a lot of undercurrent. So, I mean, I, I've almost got killed under there, just, you know, when you're swimming in metals. But I'm just asking, so when you're saying five to ten percent come out, so the current will push it out and do something with it?
Yeah, so that map, if you saw where it was, you can, it's hard to tell on that one, but it goes through like dark water on the outside, that's a ledge where it drops. And that's where we actually get most of our broken coral material that we're using. So it'll typically drop into the deeper side off of that ledge, most of the time, yeah.
Okay, Chair, I'd like to make motion after everybody asks questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Board Member Agustin.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for making time to come to the Land and Water Committee meetings to explain this. I think it's a great project that we are fortunate to have being presented for this community in terms of restoration of our reef and our fish and our agriculture. So, if your program should move forward, when would you anticipate the training program to start? Does it happen annually, where there's positions available annually, or is it just a one-time training process?
Both, so it could go both ways. We, so we have two more years of funding to continue the training program. We expect that it will continue longer because it's been extremely popular and every year it just gets bigger and the demand is there, both in the workforce. But our next one to answer your question is starting in June of 2025. So we've been running them, it's an eight-week program that we run every summer. So we'll probably, and we'll send that email out to you guys so we can disseminate it more in the community. We'll probably be putting out those recruitment flyers sometime in maybe April. And then we have another federal grant that allows us to, so that one is to trade, train them and then we have another one that allows us to employ them. So that's both here and in Maui. So we're working on that and that goes live on January first, so we're still trying So we're still trying to determine how we're going to do that, like what the candidates are. But we're, we're planning on right now pulling them from our last two cohorts that we had graduate and, um, kind of look forward from there. But that's three years of funding. Yeah.
Thank you. And then you said primarily it's to, um, train up individuals within the west coast and Eva.
Yeah, Eva and Waianae Moku.
And then, uh, what are the protocols for anchoring your vessel? Do you have a more in that pin spot?
We don't. So the sand channel that's right there again on that map is pretty big and wide, so we would throw it in there. Um, and there are always hazards with throwing an anchor around a reef and we, I mean, we see it everywhere. A lot of that, of what we're fixing is anchor damage from vessels. So there is not a robust state mooring system right now. I think Maui and the Big Island have a really good one that a nonprofit supports. So that's something that I think is coming out with the state, um, and that we really support, especially here on the west side to, you know, get less anchors on our reef. Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. We're gonna go, oh, uh, Board Member Ayo.
Can you take this to the high school, Waianae and Nanakuli then? The same presentation? So you can recruit?
Yeah, we can. I think for our program, because scuba diving and boating is involved, we are only recruiting eighteen and over. Um, so, I mean, we do have some programs for education for less than eighteen, but as far as the training because of the scuba diving, uh, it's all eighteen and over. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead.
Aaron, uh, I was wondering if, um, are you working with, um, Coast Guard or any kind of marine people out here who actually like local Hawaiians? They kind of guard our beaches. They can tell you about sharks. You know, and I was wondering, what is, you didn't state, the reason to grow the reef? Besides, uh, you know? And I love ocean sciences, but what is the reason to grow the reef really? Because the fish do their thing wherever.
Um, I mean, the primary reason is a lot of the reefs are pretty degraded out here. So, um, not all of them are, but there are a bunch of degraded ones. And it's essentially to repair the ones that are broken. And the reason I think the end goal is, like we talked about, is, uh, fish habitat, more coral, more fish. Um, I think coral reefs have been surviving for thousands of years without humans, but I think we've interrupted the cycle a bit where they cannot grow back as fast as we are injuring it. And we're just trying to balance that out a bit. Um, the people from our cohort, um, myself, um, we don't have, I think, Kupuna knowledge would be very welcome. And that's something I think, you know, we talked with the Land and Water Committee that they've shared a lot of their Manoa, uh, working with the canoe club. Um, that's something else that we're, I think, working at. So that's kind of the extent of it right now. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. We'll go ahead, uh, in person, community.
Hi Valerie Manoa, um, resident. Um, I was just wondering, and maybe this can't be answered, um, immediately, but the damages of the coral, um, if it's human cause, is it the same throughout the island? Or is there something specific for our side? And then maybe if there's something that we can do as a community to prevent that besides, um, helping the coral grow.
The one common thing, I mean, that we hear from every island and almost every community is the fresh water, right? So, and that's why, again, we try and pick partners that are doing, um, watershed work with restoring the Mulivai, restoring the forest, you know, removing invasive species, planting natives, is the water getting to the reef, um, is important, right? The limu growing, and we hear that from, you know, a lot of Kupuna all over the state, is where you take away the water, now the limu is not growing and that has an effect on the fish, but then has an effect on the coral. So, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not a marine biologist. I'm a fisherman. I don't understand it to the extent that a lot of, you know, Kupuna do. And we really welcome that knowledge, but water is the one consistent one that we hear all the time. Um, and that's why we work with Malama Learning Center and trying to restore the Mulivai there is they're doing a lot of great work and they're seeing water quality go up. So we would expect to see the reef get healthier and the limu come back.
Very good. Thank you very much. Hold on one second. I'm gonna go to Board Member Agustin, but you can come up to the microphone. Yep, go ahead. Board Member Agustin, please.
Thank you. It's to my understanding that with your project being implemented here, you will have a monetary value of the coral that will be restored, which will then be able to support, um, what happens within our coastline? To say that if there is damage from this entity due to this service, um, they need to provide the funds to, to the value of the reef. Um, and with that said, I'd like to, um, if you'd excuse me, Board Member Myers, I know you mentioned, I'd like to make a motion, um, to support the Kuliana Coral Project, um, in the Nanakuli Maile District, specifically between Zablan and Kealana. And, um, also request for a resolution be agendized next month, next month's meeting. Mahalo.
Yeah, that's you. Oh, sorry.
Okay, hold on. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Uh, do, uh, we'll open it up. Uh, sorry, Board Member Ayo seconded it. Yep. Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Board members, any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. Okay, very good. Uh, voice vote. All those in favor to support the Kuliana Coral Restoration Project in Nanakuli, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. The motion passes, uh, and I will agendize the resolution to be on next month's Neighborhood Board. And at this time, we're gonna go ahead and take another community, uh, question. And then Johnny, may I see that your hand is up? I'll get to you. Thank you.
I was wondering how does stormwater runoff affect the growth of your natural implanted reef?
Uh, yeah, that's a big one. Um, and that's kind of, I mean, the broad category of freshwater, right, is also in that. Um, specific to Nanakuli, I think because we haven't started yet, we're not, and I can't give you that specific answer. But generally, I mean, the stormwater runoff is a huge impact. So like, I also work, I've worked sixteen years for the Honolulu Fire Department. I'm still in town, uh, working there. But we have policies, you know, best management practices for stormwater specifically for that, right? So like just off of our roads, we have oil and all kind of chemicals coming, huge impact. So if there are ways to mitigate that, that's huge. Um, and Pukai Bay is a great example that the community members there for our project, um, with them are trying to work hard to like, uh, forget they're called it, culverts that are bringing the water from the road, uh, to stop that going into Pukai Bay. Um, because I know that's a big issue, um, for a lot of reasons. So not only the chemicals, but like other, you know, biological material. But yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, we'll go ahead online. Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question, please.
Thank you, Chair. Is the damage caused by runoff or by boaters?
Um, all of the above. Um, there's a lot of things impacting it. Um, and we can't really quantify it at this point, but I think that's why, you know, more monitoring and eyes on would be important to really get the answer of what is causing the damage. And then more importantly, what are the solutions that we can find? Um, and that's, you know, a part of the community, right, is how do we, how do we come up with solutions? But to get exactly what the damage is, uh, yeah, I think that's going to require a little bit more, uh, research on our part.
Well, it's refreshing to, um, I'm, I'm familiar with Malama, um, nonprofit organization. It's refreshing to hear a nonprofit that doesn't address the homeless. Um, when you said west side, my concern you including Kohlina, uh, they have catamarans and they may be a cause of damaging the reefs. Uh, and then to come to our community for funding, uh, is just not fair. However, what I would like for you, I invite you to, this Thursday on the seventeen, Waianae High School gonna have a college and career fair. I would encourage you to speak to our Senator Crabbe. He's there in the audience. I saw him come in. Talk to him and, and, and be present, October seventeen, from four to six P M. Waianae High School College and Career Fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Did you, sorry, did you have a?
Uh, sorry, was there a, um, a specific question? Sorry. Uh, definitely the Waianae High School, if we're available, we'll try and make it. Uh, and I think on that point, I think the first thing I was thinking of my mind started going to that was collaborating with them because they have a wet lab there where they have like, they grow limu and stuff. Um, so we've talked to some of the teachers there about, um, using that to possibly grow coral. Um, the permitting is huge. So, um, I heard the governor.
I'm encouraging you to be present to make them, um, to make them aware of your program. Since sometime in the future, you might recruit from, uh, this community population. So this is a great time for you to go out there, October seventh, from four to six P M. Waianae High School to introduce yourself. And our Senator Crabbe will make it happen. Thank you.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have another question? Go ahead.
Maybe not a question, but he mentioned about the Malama Learning Center. So if anyone's interested, go on to the Malama Learning Center website. Because from February until December, they have had various cleanups. And December fourteenth is the cleanup at the Mulivai. And so I went September, uh, Molly and I went there and were able to clean up there. And it is, you know, some of it is human cause. And so, um, we live along the stream. So we need to be thoughtful of what we throw into our land and our water because it makes it down to our ocean and then we eat from there and we play in there. So go to the Malama Learning Site, um, Malama Learning Center website. And December fourteenth is the next one at the, um, Mulivai. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, that's all the questions for coral, uh, Kuliana Coral. Uh, we want to thank you, Alika, very much for being in person. Um, if you had any kind of closing thoughts, go ahead.
No. Mahalo. Thank you guys for your time and we look forward to, you know, more community partnership and helping our reefs.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to, uh, item C in our presentation's annual update from P V T landfill. Uh, this is information only. We won't be taking action on it. I see that we have Ben Yamamora with us and, uh, Joe Hernandez. Yes, yes. Uh, thank you so much for being here in person. I know it's getting late. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Um, we're very happy to be here and, uh, we, we're here to make our yearly status report.
Thank you, Chairperson Decort, members of the Neighborhood Board. My name is Joe Hernandez. I'm, I actually work with the P V T landfill. I'm the environmental manager. Uh, any updates that? You must know that really it's, there is no update. We're just operating and we're trying to follow what the permit and our operating plan requires at this point. So if there's anything new, that's new to us ourselves. So any updates you might need, then there's questions that you might have, then that's something that we can entertain at the landfill or here at this point. But updates, I think there might be questions that, uh, concerns the life of the landfill. That might be one issue. That's one question I know is always asked of me of the customers. And according to our permit and our, our operating plan, we have five years. That's on an estimated, um, um, amount of time for operating. So given customers that come in, if we don't do better job of recycling and/or diverting some of the waste that come in, you know, that five years will continue. We all know that, that the more you put in, the more we make, the more you need to manage. So at this point, any updates, it's just that, it's no updates at all. We're, we're status quo. We continue to operate according to our permit and our plans.
Very good. Thank you, Joe. I'll go ahead and open up for questions. Board Member Corona and then Board Member Myers.
Yeah, just, thank you. I just have a couple. Um, uh, you're, you're five years from twenty twenty-four, so to twenty twenty-nine?
The permit and the operating plan says five years. It's an estimate based on what we're operating and what, you know, amount of waste that comes in. So if I said five years, that'd be five years now. Some people would say, you said that three years ago. I said, yes, I understand, but we do some, um, creative grading.
So it's based upon the capacity that existing cells that are currently open? And if you have, are you opening up any additional cells to continue that, that five?
No, there's no, you're right. You're right. And that's a good question only because there's no additional cells that are going to open. We're going to work with what the landfill, uh, provides. It's based on the waste that the community publicly generates.
So the existing cell is the last cell that you'll open and then, and once that fills, if it fills in two years, then the, then you're done.
If it fills to two years, then we can do more grading to find more nooks and crannies and stuff to fill. So in other words, our permit says a certain slope, but if you increase the slope, you know, you can increase capacity. We are limited to what the permit allows on vertical height and lateral, uh, um, limits. So yeah, we're staying within that. So even if I said five years, we can be real creative and make that five years go to six, seven, eight years.
Final question. Final question is, you're no longer doing recycling out there? You're just doing land, landfill, um, uh, C and D only?
Yes, management and the business itself has gone and reverted back to its core business, which is a hole in the ground, basically, put the published rubbish in. We don't recycle anymore. We used to and we have since ceased our M R D management. The reason why I'm looking to Ben a lot is because it's a business decision. All right.
Okay, very good. Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I want to, um, direct my question to Ben.
Sure.
Yeah. So Ben, I know that P V T in the past have, have given out scholarships to students and then also had assisted Nanakuli High Intermediate School with their track and field, but also with the drama team. Um, I remember Mr. Kitsu had brought that up to me that, um, how P V T had helped the drama team. Now, commute there outside tonight, some were passing out this related to the Kawaihona article about, about environmental racism in Nanakuli, all types of environmental racism. One of them being, they're saying that P V T landfill. But also with regards to this alluding, we proudly represent our community to line our pockets. So my question to you is, have our Chair Samantha Decort ever taken campaign donations from P V T?
No, she has not.
Okay. Has, have you ever given her money directly to herself, Samantha Decort?
No, we have not.
Okay. Have you given money to Patty Teruia, the chair, the previous chair, to herself?
We give to her, uh, community, uh, what we call her.
Nonprofit organization.
Organization.
Okay. And then with Andrea Topola, have you donated to her campaign fund?
Oh, yes, we have in the past.
And then also to her, but aligning her individual personal pockets?
No.
Okay. So I just wanted to, um, bring that up because when they're attaching it to this, they're alluding to maleficence. And this is a form of defamation, which, which I would highly encourage our three leaders to sue whoever is passing out these things and also holding the banners up on Farrington Highway or wherever else in our community. This is a form of harassment, but it's not only harassing these three individuals, but harassing P V T landfill. When you're stapling it, I found this on my mailbox, stapled together. Because I, P, um, PBS Hawaii, they, when they do their director, uh, production program, I had attended it. They taught us defamation one-on-one because they wanted to remind us, freedom of speech does not include freedom to defame someone's character. So I just wanted to ask you in a public forum to verify on record about these three individuals, but also P V T's, uh, donations in the past to our community with scholarships as well as to our high school. So that's all I had to ask you. Mahalo.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Board Member Myers. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up, uh, Board Member Agustin.
Hi, thank you. Um, first off, thank you for donating the guard shack at Nanakuli High School and also backpacks to all of the keiki at the elementary schools. And so. And so, um, you folks do provide support within the community and that's helpful and recognized. Um, on the other hand, I want to um just ask about the environmental impact of the community and the residents living within close proximity of, of PVT. If you guys have ever done a health screening or understood um how the, the families are impacted living in the area.
Yes, you raised environmental impact. Uh, first of all, the facility would never open without getting a permit from the environmental agency, the Department of Health, and that agency is a public agency tasked to protect the public. Now, in the case of PVT as a facility, we have things in place and conditions in our permit that requires us to follow. Monitoring groundwater, stormwater monitoring, you know, uh dust control. Um, even the waste we have to screen out as far as what the waste may bring in. We don't just bring in anything. A lot of customers would ask, can we take this in? Can we take this in? We know that a lot of stuff that they're, they're bringing in is not qualified to come into PVT. We are a construction demolition land. And the ways that we bring in, the basic is the demo material that most of us will, when we demolish a home, that's the type of ways that comes in. Now, some of that waste may have environmental impact, lead base, asbestos, you know, things like that. That we screen out also. And we ask the customer, make sure that none of that is present. And that the levels, if they do run tests and they do run tests and any of these wastes meets what the Department of Health requires us to make sure that we follow in our permit. That's the environment, but the environmental impact is there. And anytime we as a public throw away anything, waste and all that, there's always environmental impact. Who's watching that? I know that our facility is highly regulated. So we are tasked and we are operating it according to what the permit requires.
So there's, um, have there been any health screening for the residents living in the area? Are there's, you're saying it's not necessary?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm, I don't know. I mean, any health screening they may have will have to be between them, their doctor and whoever. Because PVT doesn't, is not in the business to going out and screening for health. We're not docs, we're not a medical facility. So yeah, if that happens, it's something that we need to know also. I mean, if we want to allude to the fact that the landfill and health is tied in, that has to be also provided. What information is there that ties that? We don't know that and we're not there to make that count.
Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions, community. Go ahead. Yep. Up to the microphone, uh, and then we'll go to online after in person.
Yeah.
Austin Salzero, just one question. You mentioned about getting permits with the Department of Health. It just may be related, non-related, but it's just, I'm just concerned. Do you folks go to the State Health Planning and Development Agency for a certificate of need for the operations that you folks are doing? Does it apply to your certificate of need with the Department of Health affiliate, the State Health Planning and Development Agency? Do you folks acquire any certificate of need by then?
A certificate of need is first I hear about. What we do following is what the Department of Health requires whenever you open an industrial facility such as a landfill and waste managing facility. Operating permit along with the operating permit, which would be approved is all the documents that needs to be submitted with that permit. But a certificate of need, it, it sounds as though, do we need a landfill? In, in other words. That certificate itself is not something that anybody, I mean, if anybody here has land that they want to open up a, a landfill, I don't believe there's a certificate that approached, uh, and I don't know what agency. There is land use, there is operating permits, there are these facilities that need to have these kinds of documents approved first before they even move forward.
No, I just was trying to make a validation here on certain other concerns as well. They may be correlated. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to online. Uh, Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you Chair.
The question I have, do you um communicate with the, the state or the city, the mayor or the governor as far as suggesting how to reduce waste? Because if we can reduce waste, then your landfill can be in existing as long as possible. But have you suggested to the city or the state regarding reducing of waste? And I'm so glad Helene didn't come here. Those hurricane of the people in Florida. Uh, what they're going through is just horrendous and Milton as well. But the question to you, have you suggested to the mayor ideas of how to reduce waste? Thank you.
I'm going to try my best to answer that question and only because the agency we deal with is a state-run agency, the Department of Health. Uh, the facility is permitted by a state agency. The city and county would probably have committees and or, I think the, 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 the word would be would the experts and or those who run the landfill be invited to become part of, you know, uh inputs? Um, I can be a member of one of those committees. I am, unfortunately, I'm not. I know we've had past members of, and operators at PVT that were invited by the city to be part of a, um, um, think tank basically, you know, what, what you call it. And they would be the ones to provide input onto how to reduce waste, as the question says, uh, recycling. And we tried that, but again, PVT is a private landfill. It is a business. And if any business, you always want to make sure that you, you pretty much contribute to the bottom line. So if it doesn't make sense, why would you do anything if it doesn't make sense, if it doesn't make the, you know, um, um, the money that you're in business for? But we do provide input which would help towards those kinds of committees that might want to find how to reduce waste. We tried that through the MRD process, recycling, you know, uh, managing and reducing waste. I know one thing as an engineer, and this is a, a personal opinion from being part of the public, is that the only best way people not to create waste, okay, is not to create the waste, how do we recycle? But we throw things away so many times. We are a throwaway society. So where does it go? Where does it go? You, we all don't like it when it goes in the street. We all don't like it and goes in the curb, right? Uh, um, the analogy I always get when I, I run tours of the landfill is it's a community's trash can. I don't see you guys putting your trash can in somebody else's house. I don't see you guys getting rid of your trash can that I don't need it. You know, so that's how I see it. And as an engineer, we're tasked to operate it properly. Permit because we're highly regulated. And if you want to throw waste away, we'll take care of it, but there is a fee. It's a business. You think you guys are not going to do it free. Nobody does. But we try and do it according to what an agency tasked by the public, elected by elected officials says you do it this way or else you can't open it, you can't get permit. Okay? But to answer her original question is how do you reduce waste? We are part of those kinds of committees that provide input. And you know, you talk about recycling. Here in Hawaii, recycling is pretty much a circle, right? You start out by throwing away, collecting it, transporting it, turning it into raw material and turning it into a product. That never reaches like that. So that's how I see recycling is it never reaches a full circle. It doesn't, you separate it out and it goes somewhere else, another market. Okay, that.
But I, I hope, I hope someday when you have a burning desire as a citizen to write, write as a citizen to the mayor or the governor. Thank you. Unsolicited, okay, as a citizen. Thank you so much for attending this meeting.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead and then I'll uh go to you online.
Okay, uh, I'm glad PVT came here. Uh, I used to work on the opposite side on Hakima Road. Those avenues we could come down and all you smelled was gas and meth. And they started building it up on Ulihava. And uh, I was wondering if you guys had a gas mill there, but that's really not the question. Um, you've been here almost forty years, PVT. And you just started giving out a little bunnies, maybe around 2005. And mostly to your family, the um, the PAC and the DOE. And forty years, and they're just now telling us about their envi- their environmental, we have to take your landfill? No, we don't. Only now, in the last fifteen years, you've been honest about your, what you've been taking in. And that's asbestos and it blows and it gets all swampy. And people get sick. And there had been a, a cancer uh survey here back in 2000. You guys didn't believe it affected the community. And we're trying to get, I hopeful, it's getting shut down right here at Waimea Nalo Gooch. And I hope you guys leave too. You see, you just have to take it apart, okay? This is nothing. Okay, the government in uh Washington DC, they take billions of dollars for themselves. Millions of dollars.
Okay, thank you.
This is nothing.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. We're going to go online. Uh, Patty, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, thank you Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Aloha, Madam Chair. Aloha, Board Members. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, aloha PVT for your updates and um, I just wanted to, you know, as a former chair, um, um, appreciate you coming to the board to provide these updates um of the landfill. And some of us may not want the landfill there, um, uh, you know, and want it closed and, you know, and, and truthfully, um, someday our community will go without a landfill. But clearly I wanted to also um make note that what you, what whoever has distributed those false accusations and um, and commend Jermaine Myers, Board Members, to stand out bold is that um, these are really false accusations and I'm not sure why it's happening again, you know, and so, you know, um, and you know, just to be flat out, you know, it's continuing, continuing slander of whether the chair or myself or Andrew Topola. And attaching it with um PVT is totally, i- it's a shame that our um, the community and the resident Sabrina Grace has, has come down that low, you know. And you know, this weekend, I'm going to add, this weekend, we had such a Unity 96792 program at Nanakuli Beach Park. And it was with churches, it was with elective officials, and it was to bring unity to 96792. And um, to see banners across the street um, um, on that day to be, to, with that same faces on there. It was nonsense. It, it, it was nonsense. It was done by people who don't worship. I mean, it's terrible that they can go out there and waste money and waste time to target people like myself or Samantha and Andrew Topola, I mean, you know, and, and make accusations that we're taking funds. But Jermaine, thank you for bringing this up because it is right. It's harassment. Um, you know, we're working forward to fix this, uh, you know, and um they should never tie us in with PVT and um, uh, be able to slander good people in the community. But I just wanted to bring this up boldly, you know, and, and bring it out there, you know, and um, this nonsense got to stop. Whoever's behind, you know, Sabrina and whoever's behind this group, got to stop this. That's not unifying 96792 at all. That's not bringing the community together. But I'm going to close and just thank um PVT for all your um, your donations. And it, this is not back seven ye- seventeen years or what? It's back from the beginning when myself and Resentis started with them to create a scholarship, school scholarship for Yaina Nanakuli. And that um, you know, their funds, they are there, but the funds that they provide is to help our school. Is to help our sports team and to help other organizations who have positive programs to serve in our community. So, you know, please get the right facts before you stop blasting people out on, on social media or at a neighborhood board meeting. But, you know, I just want to, again, thank you so much for donating your funds to our community, to our schools, because I sure don't see unions stepping up or other people stepping up and to um supply funds and equipment for all our kids. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you again, Board Member Jermaine, for your boldness, your research. Because when you speak, I know you research and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Aloha. God bless.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Patty, thank you. We appreciate you. Uh, seeing that there's no other questions, we want to just mahalo PVT for coming down. Ben and Joe, thank you very much for being here in person. Uh, please drive home safely and thank you for all that you do for our community. Mahalo and aloha. All right, so we're moving on to officials' monthly reports. Uh, just doing a time check. It's nine oh six. Uh, so we are ending at ten PM, so I just want to encourage everybody, if you can keep your questions, concerns brief and even your reports as well. But Gary, thank you for being with us this evening. Go ahead and give your report.
Thank you Chairperson Decort, members of the board. Um, Gary Amashroya, I'm the Governor's Rep for the Nanakuli uh community. Um, there were several things that I was asked to follow up on last meeting. One of them was um actually Board Member Myers had asked a question about a UIPA request. Uh, you, last meeting, you had requested um me to follow up on a UIPA request you had made. My understanding is that they responded today. Okay, and okay. Uh, okay. Oh, okay. Um, they, if, if there is, if there are documents that are responsive to your request, they should have let you know where those documents would be. Um, or if they don't have any documents responsive to your request. That's how it should have been resp- I don't know how they responded to you. Um, and just for future reference, if you're, if you're going to follow up, and this is for anybody, if you're going to um request a UIPA request from the Governor's Office on Homelessness and Housing Solutions, apparently they're, they're part of the Department of Human Services. So any UIPA request should go to the Department of Human Services um, uh, for them to follow, for, for them to follow up on. But you know, feel free to forward that to me if you'd like.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Proceed, proceed.
So there was another question about CIP funding for Nanai Kapono Elementary School. Um, apparently the playground was destroyed by a fire. Um, that was, or damaged in some way. So someone was asking, I may have been Board Member Agustin, who was asking about when the funds would be released by the Governor's Office. So um, we did try to look that up. The only thing we could find for Nanai Kapono Elementary were there's plans and construction of new sprinkler system landscaping and maintenance that was appropriated in Act 164 for eighty-five thousand. Um, it is pending approval and release. The request was submitted to the Governor's Office in January of this year. So um, that is the only one we could find for Nanai Kapono Elementary. There are two for Nanakuli Elementary. Um, and uh, one of them is for maintenance equipment and appurtenances appropriated, appropriated in Act 164 as well. Um, and that's pending approval. It was submitted to the Governor's Office in January. And there's also one for resurfacing of the hillside at the back of the basketball courts. Replacement of vandalized cameras and sprinkler system for the upper field. Equipment and appurtenances appropriated for one million dollars in Act 230. Um, the allotment request is anticipated to be sent for approvals at the end of October, early November 2024. So I, I would like to meet with you afterwards to try to figure out, get more information about that. The one you were asking, because we couldn't find something that, that fit the, the um.
Yeah, and then uh, sorry, not to interrupt, but Representative Keela did say that he was going to clarify about Nanai Kapono playgrounds.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, Board Member Corona asked about a, a contact for DOT. Since George Absidy was.
I'm good.
So Larry Dill informed me that he did reach out to you and Maaza Macuria is the new um Nanakuli Neighborhood Board Liaison for DOT.
Thank you.
Um, the status of Siren uh 08317, repairs are currently on track. The contract was awarded to the contractor. Um, and now the contractor is negotiating the terms with uh Department of Accounting and General Services. Once finalized, a notice to proceed will be issued to the contractor and then allowing the repair work to commence shortly thereafter. Um, and at this time, the- And at this time, they don't see any reason why there would be any delay in the Siren repair. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Board Member Corona and Board Member Myers and Board Member Hano Hano.
All right, Gary, thanks, I've been itching all night to get this. So just bear with me for a second, the board, if you give me just a little bit of leeway, I'm gonna try to get this through as fast as I can. The governor just came out with his newest emergency proclamation on affordable housing, number denied, denied proclamation. In paragraph five B, I'm just gonna read from that real quick, and this is tying into my whole entire support from the Governor's Office back here. So I'm just reading from that, it says, "At least sixty percent of the total units will be offered for sale or rent to applicants who's earn zero to one hundred and forty percent of the AMI." And the reason why I bring that up, because I don't, this is gonna tie into my requests. So, one hundred and forty percent of a family of four is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. So essentially, the way I read that in the emergency proclamation is, the governor says, "The entire AMI spectrum, however, sixty percent has to be between that entire spectrum." So therefore, I can, a developer can go out there and make a whole development with homes that are out of the reach of somebody who can afford it, because one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for a family of four is, in my opinion, does not meet the need for affordable housing. So, and so the reason why I'm bringing this up is because then it goes to the outstanding work that the Salsedos did on their research regarding the certificate of need for the CON with the state health planning and development agency who is under the State Department of Health. So I wanna clarify that, if anything that has state health, it falls under the Department of Health. Therefore, the Department of Health is over in charge of that organization or agency to an extent. But the point is, is that any program that's implemented, it's gonna have a department head. So, the department head, I would think, is the... Yeah, I understand, I understand, but the point, I'm getting to my final part here. So, I'm a person who likes to be informed before I, you know, bring my issues out. So I'm trying to make sure I'm informed. I take the data and I try to research it. I need more, I need help. So I'm looking for the state, especially from the Department of Health, and specifically this agency, state health planning and development. I would like a very good, someone that's gonna return my communications, because I wanna have them come to a committee meeting for next month, so they can help educate us, not complain, not cause any issues, but to help educate my committee on housing and zoning. Therefore, we can come back and work within our board and within the community, so we can better understand what the state's trying to do with or without our knowledge, or so we become educated, help them help us going forward. So, that's important, so you could please do that for me. And I would need to know what, within a week... Well, so here it is. So, November would be my committee meeting, and I would, and so, and after that, we're recessed until January. So I don't wanna lose any momentum of the work they've been doing, or what's coming on in the committee, I mean, in the community. So I just wanna get some information for next year, when these topics come up more and more in the future.
What are your preferences for them to attend the November meeting?
Absolutely, I wanna work with them, get an agenda set up, and I want specific topics to discuss. I think it's important, we as a committee need to understand, and invite community members into that committee meeting, so they can be informed and educated as well, because that's important, education's important on this matter.
And just to clarify, I don't know specifically about this attached agent, but if an agency is administratively attached to a department, the department does not have authority over that agency, they just support it administratively with HR, with, they're included in their budget. So technically, the department doesn't have the authority. There may be a governing board or a commission, but we did identify the name of an administrator.
Yeah, just, if you could, you know, email me the point of contact at DOH, because it's a partnership, it's just not, it's a partnership. So, I want the DOH, a good DOH point of contact, and the agency, so I can establish a committee meeting with them for next month, I have a presentation provided. Great, thank you, Gary.
Very good, thank you, Board Member Corona, Board Member Myers, and then Board Member Hano, oh, go ahead, Board Member Hano Hano.
Hi. Thank you, Gary, for being here. This is a personal question, kinda, sorta. I was trying to get ahold of anybody in the DHHL for different issues, you know, questions I have on my lease. And another question I had, so they say, "Leave a message," and that was months ago, no one ever got back to me. And I found out that that doesn't seem to be a unique... A unique situation. And when you go there, put it this way, they're not too helpful nor friendly. So is there a way to contact the department without leaving a message and never getting a call back?
I can certainly try to find out that answer for you. Yeah, so...
It's not the same department, the questions I had was two different departments, you know, different question.
Within the DHHL?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, yeah, I was just wondering if there's another way to contact them.
Yeah, and maybe after the meeting, we could talk and tell me what the issues are, and maybe I can clarify who is responsible for those issues within...
I would appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary, go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Were you in the room earlier when I was talking to HPD? Because I thought he would understand, and he was quoting the old law. But regarding Senate Bill thirty-one thirty-nine, Act 86, were you in the room at the time?
I was here, although...
So, I'm concerned about the Director of Health designating, quote, "other facilities" to include group living homes that serve community members with mental health issues. So, I'll send it, I'll work on sending an email to you, but what I'm concerned about is, community member Austin Salsedo had shared with our board last year, the master plan for a mental health facility operator that were going through the permitting process to build a twenty-bed facility in Makaha, within the old coronets across from Makaha seven eleven. My, so my question to you is, can you provide to us what the Director of Health is designating facilities that are in Senate District twenty-two? That are considered other facilities that would be serving Act eighty-six? Does this twenty-bed facility in Makaha is included in that, that's gonna service that Act eighty-six? As an other facility? And then also, what does John Mizuno have in mind as far as building? Because Sam Moko had stated that John Mizuno was building this and that, and then John Mizuno came into the September meeting from Kalimauiliili and stated the health facilities that he was gonna build in different communities, and how much beds were included in that. So, I wanna know, what does John Mizuno have coming through the pipeline that is going to be other facility or mental health facilities that he is planning or wants to build in Senate District twenty-two that will serve Act eighty-six? That HPD will bring them here, or crisis intervention will bring them here, and then in forty-eight hours, they will be released? Will they be going back to the community that they were picked up from, or they're just gonna be told, "Leave the community, leave the facility," which means they're gonna be in our community? So if you can get back to us on that, mahalo.
Thank you very much, okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to...
Wait, 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 I have a second one.
Okay.
That one was long. This one has to do with Crown Lands, and I'm a native Hawaiian, so I'm very concerned about it. So I'm gonna ask the mayor's rep about this, but the part that I want to ask you is about. So, Tommy Waters introduced Resolution twenty-four dash two-three-eight. And it's approving and authorizing acceptance of conveyance of a thirty-foot wide lot comprising a portion of government Crown Lands in Lululewa and I by quitclaim deed from the state of Hawaii DLNR. That parcel of land is behind Sacan Save. And it's a parcel of land that is our current emergency access road. I'm very concerned that he wants to quit title our government Crown Lands that should stay in public hands into a private entity. And the private entity is the Self-Help Housing Corporation of Hawaii, a developer that wants to develop on twelve acres of land, eighty-six low and low-income families. My concern with Tommy Waters is that, last year, we got bus up, this board got bus up, because we had protested and we had opposed a bill that he had proposed that said, within a half-mile radius of PVT landfill, or any landfill, that he was proposing that they would get a tax exemption, pay zero property tax. And some of the members that was in the room earlier were upset at us because we had opposed that. We said all of Waimea Coast, because we got Waimeanalo Gooch and PVT. But now, this project that Tommy Waters wants to quit title deed, our Crown Lands with the road, they're gonna be building within a half-mile radius of PVT landfill. So my question to the state is, is it not healthy and toxic to live within a half-mile radius of a landfill? Or not? Because you're allowing new homes to be built. Not just that RJ Martin. With green homes Hawaii, so those are my two questions, my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Myers, okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to community in the room, and I see your hands online, I'll get to you. Please state your name for the minutes.
Okay, Gary, Austin Salsedo. I cite this right now, the state health planning and development, who issued out this certificate of need, bring it to the governor's attention, there was a mishandling of this certificate of need by this administration. I call it double standards. When the certificate of need was issued to this drug rehab facility out in Makaha, and over at Ford Street Mall, it was issued out in May fifth, twenty twenty-one, particular the year, and June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Heard Hawaii revised statute, their own state Hawaii revised statute. Each certificate of need issued shall be valid for a period of one year from the date of issuance, unless it's extended. There's no indication to our city councilwoman for any extension or anything that brought to the community for impact study, zero. So in other words, our own Department of Health had violated the own Hawaii revised statute, twenty-three dash D dash forty-three section. Twenty-three twenty-three, D as in Delta dash forty-three, underlying certificate of need. So it's supposed to be revoked, rescinded, and out of there year twenty twenty-two. But it's still in operation, this certificate of need. Why is it so double standard? That's a question to the governor. Mishandling of the administration, the Department of Health and attachment by state health planning and development agency, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna take you in person, one online, and then we've gotta move on for sake of time.
My question, Erin Conniayakala, my question to the governor is, is Waimeanalo Gooch still on track to close down February twenty-eighth or March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven?
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, can I add to one, just one briefly?
Quickly.
To add to this, I think the state should investigate itself, and I request for the state law enforcement to get involved, because they represent the Attorney General's Office. They took the law enforcement under the Act, I think it was three seventy, two seventy-eight, and they took the law enforcement of the state Attorney General into the state law enforcement to take investigations on. So maybe I can request our governor to appoint our state law enforcement to investigate the Department of Health's due process, because they're violating it, right? For the normal person, they would get slammed. They should deserve some type of penalties of violation, extending a one-year period against the HRS. Okay? That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question?
Thank you, Chair. Where's the mayor's rep? Can he come to the mic, please?
If you have a question for him, you can wait until he gives his report. If you don't have a question for Governor's Rep, we're gonna close this part and move on.
No, I do, but I don't see him at the mic. It has to do with homeless.
Okay, when...
Can he hear me?
Oh, Governor's Rep, you mean?
Yeah, the Governor's Rep, that's where we at, right? Okay. I would like for the Governor's Office to prepare a list of all the homeless program that he's doing an emergency proclamation, so that we know what nonprofit or programs addressing the homeless housing situation in nine-six-seven-nine-two. A list to go to Chair Ikoy and Chair Ganaban from Waimea Neighborhood Board. So that way, we know who's coming to our community and who gave the green light, if the governor gave the green light for them to do business in our community. I am just so frustrated that this entire community is just swamped with homeless programs, housing. It really doesn't, it really brings down the morale of our community. It almost gives the community no hope. The dome in Waimea, Kaiulu, we supposedly had been temporary by Governor Lingo, is still there. That needs to be taken away, it's been there since twenty oh seven, and in its place, teachers work for housing. In its place, teacher workforce housing, like Mililani High School.
Okay.
And the idea of remodeling public housing and then selling it like KPT. We also had, under Lingo's administration, affordable housing by the state, which is recently sold by the state.
Thank you.
Now Merite Housing and Kahoumanu Housing will be redeveloped, and is the state gonna sell that? And I think the homeless...
We're gonna move on.
Is not utilizing...
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Nursing homes and Section Eight, they belong in permanent shelters and not temporary.
We're gonna move on, we're gonna move on.
I just wanna set expectations, I don't think that the Governor's Office or the state government would keep a list of all nonprofits working in a certain geographic area. They may have a, be able to track what grant fundings available, or not-for-profits that utilize grant funds or somehow connected to the government, but not all not-for-profits that are operating in nine-six-seven-nine-two. Because they may be operating on their own.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you very much. Okay, so, did you have a question for Governor's Rep? Okay, make it really, really quick, okay?
Quick.
Thank you.
Flexing Star Dela Cruz, Diplomatic Minister of Koha Vai Pana, the Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands. I'm putting my name on record as a diplomat for the Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands, and I'm taking it note on record as three-two-three-D forty-three certification of need in regards, and I'm letting the governor be on notice, thank you.
Thank you very much, go ahead, up to the microphone, state your name for the record, please.
Aloha, Kalais Salsedo. The question to the governor, you know, we wanna view more homes affordable. Well, the question to the governor, you know, we want to build more homes affordable. What's affordable for him is not affordable for Waimea. You know? And it's a gentrification, that's what he's doing. Gentrification is the cause of the whole island. Gentrification for business people like him and the mayor. Gentrification. Computers, people that been in for the mainland to take local jobs too, and only give them the scum jobs, okay? Gentrification is the cause of our beaches being packed because they've been priced out of Hawaii, okay? Now, he said that Mr. Kirk Perella had no aloha. Where is he's, where is he aloha? Where's the governor's aloha? He's not Hawaii nei. He's not born in Hawaii. I born, I see the pain. I see my kupunas suffer. I see the children fear. Gentrification, you want gentrification? Take it somewhere else, someplace else. Our whole island, Hawaiian Islands, is being affected by businessmen's of gentrification. More houses to build, more banks comes in. Gentrification is our problem on the nine-six-seven-nine-two. So don't say affordable housing, because you know, the governor know we cannot afford, people cannot afford. The gentrification needs to stop and stop being deceived. And he has the audacity to say we don't have aloha, whereas he's aloha.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Mayor's Rep, Gary. Thank you so much for being with us in person. Thank you for graciously handling our questions and getting back to us. Drive safe. Go ahead, Erwin.
Hey, thank you. In the interest of time, I'm just gonna go through some of the most significant announcements, which is the city's Department of Environmental Services planned to increase the sewer service charge for all residential and commercial customers starting in July 1st, 2025. So if you'd like to have a debriefing with the city, call them at eight-zero-eight-seven-six-eight-three-four-eight-six. We also answered a number of questions last month with respect to parks, and we have those answers in our report. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mayor's Rep? Board Member Corona, Board Member Myers, Board Member Hano Hano.
Yeah, Erwin, just real quick, I'm gonna give you a TM, a TMK here. This will be, the TMK is eight-seven-zero-zero-one-zero-two-nine. This is on Farrington Highway, the, just before Mailei Eili Road. There was two homes that were there, built in nineteen fifty-five. I think this is the location where the, the state was possibly considering a kahale, which is state land. Those homes have been demoed, but there's no permit on file with DPP. So I was just curious if, with the DPP, how those homes were demoed without a permit? And that the state just removed the home. The reason why I said that, because it's nineteen fifty-five homes, lead paint, asbestos, and the homes were demoed, but no permit on file. So I'd have some feedback on that. Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Erwin, I'm gonna email you the same time I email Copa Pagan with a video for Samaku and then everything about Senate Bill thirty-one thirty-nine. My other question has to do with ash, H-power ash. Are they still operating H-power?
Yes.
Okay, so the state shut down AES, but they didn't shut down H-power?
Um, to my understanding, H-power still operates. I'm not sure about AES. But the ash still gets generated and gets disposed of in the Waimea Nalo Gouche landfill.
Okay, because Melody Anduha had given a presentation last, or earlier this year, at Waimea Neighborhood Board on behalf of a nonprofit, environmental nonprofit, that said it was toxic to our health, the ash. But yet, everything that's going up to Waimea Nalo Gouche is coming from H-power ash, right?
That's to our knowledge. That's correct. But we can find out. I'll find out for you.
And then the second question is, for the new landfill, are they gonna still operate an H-power, an H-power ash?
To my understanding is yes.
Oh, wow. So why did they shut down AES?
Uh, not sure. I gotta find out for you.
Okay, and then can you please note that from my house in Nana Kuli to PVT landfills, two-point-two miles, and from my house to Waimea Nalo Gouche is two-point-nine miles. So this article talked about AES ash and being dumped at PVT landfill, but Waimea Nalo Gouche got H-power ash, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member Hano Hano.
Um, Erwin, I wanna thank you and the city for getting on that baseball field so quickly. I know I made a concern Tuesday evening, Thursday morning, they were there. I had to like stop and go, oh my gosh, how did that happen? And, you know, they were really working hard. And then the following Tuesday, they came and put base anchors. I didn't know that was a thing. But I, yeah, okay. But I talked to the guys there, and they're from the Maintenance Support Services. And one of the workers actually live in Nana Kuli. So they were really happy to be able to work on that field, but I appreciate, you know, the quickness, so.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, Erwin.
Yes, Erwin, thank you very much. Great job. Okay, we're gonna move on to, oh, sorry, Board Member Agustin.
Hi, uh, thank you for fixing the field, yes. Number four on your document here for the bridge maintenance at Zablan Beach. It mentions clearing vegetation, Malka side of the bridge, but it's actually not Malka of the bridge. It's westbound of the bridge on city and county property, so more towards the hale, the canoe hale.
Okay.
It's, and so it's all surrounded in that area with Holicoa and.
Is there a, is there like a facility that we can reference so that we can look at it?
Yeah, so, oh no, it's behind the canoe hale. Yeah, it's like a little divot that goes down right where the turn is, where the road is, going up to the park, the camping site. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the area they're requesting. Malama Learning Center would appreciate if the kiave trees are trimmed so that they can work on the ground area during their restoration projects. And their next restoration is gonna be on December fourteenth, as mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and move on to questions, community. We have online. Johnny May, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Thank you, Chair. This is regarding the homeless. Okay, so there's a lot of nonprofit that addressed the homeless situation. And I don't, I don't think that the government really monitor what goes on with this program. But I just feel some of the clients are entitled to go to nursing home, are entitled to go to senior housing rather than living the way they are now. Thank you, that's my comment. And, you know, it's like out of sight, out of mind. Government need to monitor these programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for Mayor's Rep. Erwin, if you want to go into Board of Water Supply report, thank you.
Uh, thank you. We just had one main break on Mohii Street on ten-five. And then we've also launched our twenty-twenty-five post and poetry contra, contest. Entrance, to enter is February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. That's it.
Okay, very good. Board members, any questions for Board of Water Supply, C nine? Okay, none online, none in person. Thank you so much, Erwin, for being with us in person. Thank you for being gracious with getting back to our questions. Okay, um, uh, board, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go out of order since we have State Senator Crosscrab here in the room. I do believe we have our council member online, so I'm gonna take online after we have our in-person reports finished on this side. So thank you for bearing with us, those of you that are online. So State Senator Crosscrab, if you can give your report, please. Thank you.
Okay, ooh, long night. Aloha, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Thank you so much for having me today. I know that my staff sent our October newsletter before this meeting. I hope you folks all got it. In terms of updates, I wanted to share really quickly. So in the Waimea Neighborhood Board meeting a couple of weeks ago, I shared that we're gonna be hosting a couple of town halls. And so I would like to say, note that our Housing Town Hall on October thirtieth is going to be here at Nana Iku Pono Elementary School from six to eight PM. And then we were supposed to have an Education Town Hall. I was working with Chair Ganaban, Chair Endo, and Chair Agustin on this town hall along with the DOE. And I just found out today that the DOE would like a little more time to prepare for the town hall. So we're going to be postponing the date. We do not know when yet. So once that date is finalized, we will be figuring it out and working with the chairs to get that through. In terms of flyers, so the Education Town Hall flyer was not distributed. But for the Housing Town Hall, we finally got the confirmation from Nana Iku Pono Elementary School. So that flyer will be, begin to be distributed throughout the community. And then I wanted to go back to the conversation of group living facilities that Salsedo Ohana brought up. So that was also brought up to our office's attention. We did meet with the Attorney General's Office to discuss, you know, what is the legislative issue surrounding it? So in terms of, though, there's different issues surrounding it. But the prevention of enforcement has recently before been focused on HIPAA, specifically with the Clean and Sober Homes. But actually, when it comes down to the Fair Housing Act, that's been a stopper for this as well. And so when we met with the AGs, we agreed that they would give us a couple of weeks, or after a couple of weeks, they would give us a response. We did not receive that response yet. I did follow up. And so, Gary, I'm so happy you're here. If we can work out a conversation to work on this issue for the Salsedo Ohana in terms of group living facilities, that would be appreciated. But again, with the issue with enforcement came down, it's in terms of zoning that they said. So group living facilities supposed to be, or communal housing, should be limited to, or any group living facility that wants to apply for permitting is limited to eight people that are unrelated and up. So any amount of unrelated people in a house, eight and under, eight people that are unrelated and under is allowed. And so the conversation with the AG's office came about with us saying that should we amend that law or that rule? And so that current rule or ordinance is currently under the city council. And so they recommended that the legislature not do legislation concerning zoning because the counties usually try to handle zoning within themselves, because the zoning within the counties are usually different. So that's why I'm still waiting for the response to figure out what is the best to proceed. But I am willing to work with the council member's office on that discussion, and I am more than willing to work with the state departments on that conversation as well. That is all I have for.
Very good. We'll go to board members' questions first, and then we'll go to community, Board Member Corona, and then Board Member Myers.
Yeah, I'm just real, 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 real direct into the point here is it's individually hearing these things is fine, but I, I really think that collaboratively, it needs to be brought into this type of forum within the committees and the neighborhood board. Because one person or two people, that's great, they might get some information, but it needs to be within the community forum, meaning committees and at the neighborhood board, so we can all understand everything. Because you just, you know, you spit out a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, it's a very.
It's very complicated, very complicated. The more people we have to understand it, the better than the ones and the twos. So I'm just wanna, so hopefully with Gary, we can get something for the committee, get more engagement, and then bring it back to the boards, and the boards can be engaged, informed educationally. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. The election, our next neighborhood board meeting in November is a third Tuesday. Election is before that. So can I ask you for, by the time we get to the Housing Town Hall, that you provide us with a list of all the group living homes along nine-six-seven-nine-two? I know you mentioned Fair Housing Act. Okay, so first of all, all nonprofits have to register with Attorney General's Office. Fair Housing Act, I have a list, the state publishes a list of affordable rentals. All of those affordable rentals receive low-income housing tax credit and other type of funding that is under the banner of Fair Housing Act, okay? So that doesn't protect them from being published, who are the names of the facilities. For example, you know, Catholic charities, they have, I mean, the US Vet, those are all Fair Housing Act. They're not exempt from being published for public record. The second thing you mentioned was HIPAA. HIPAA protects the individual's personal records. Fair Housing Act protects the individual's personal records regarding that they live in that facility or they live in that affordable rental. It does not protect from sharing information with the community of their location, their address, what do they do for the community? Because, for example, HIPAA, it protects me, Jermaine Myers, if I have AIDS. You cannot disclose that to anyone without my permission. By the way, I don't have AIDS. I'm just using an example. But you, as a facility, can share with the community. I have one patient or I have one consumer that has AIDS. I have five consumers that have schizophrenia. I have ten consumers with ADHD, all within this facility. So Fair Housing Act tells you that you only need to protect their records. You give, they're paying three hundred dollars rent. Jermaine Myers is renting from this facility. But it doesn't protect that you disclose who are these facilities in the community. So can you please provide us with the list of mental health facilities, group living homes, et cetera, et cetera, that was listed under SR thirty that Senator Miley is concerned about in our community? And provide the names of the facilities, the nonprofit that's managing them or own them, and then the, how many beds and where are they located? What is their address? And then later on, we can find out what kind of mental health conditions that they have, how many of each in that facility. Mahalo.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Board Member Agustin?
Thank you. I'm a little disappointed the Education Town Hall got pushed back. But I'm hoping that we can still schedule it before our next board meeting, before the election with you. Especially being that we had a lot of students present at our last meeting, facility and maintenance concerns for education within multiple schools on, on this side. So if you are able to, please get that date out as soon as possible so that we can help to mediate and work with the community concerns with the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, really quickly, Chair Agustin, I'll be following up with you about the town hall, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, we're going over to community. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes.
Erin Coniayakala. Okay, my first question is, who's in charge right now of the hurricane preparedness? Because we're going into hurricane season, you know, on the Waimea side, or if it's the state. And because we have so many victims of, you know, real sensitive stories out here, I'm talking, they come from everywhere. I don't think people should take it so personally. You don't know their trauma or where they've been. And we, we're, because of all the hurricane in the East Coast, I imagine they're gonna be, we're gonna be having more. We could be having more. So, you know, I'm just thinking our priority is right here, right now. Why should people come out of state or even island hop and come over here, be homeless? And, you know, just hang out, because it's, it's gonna be winter. And of course, you can't freeze, freeze out here, maybe in the ocean. But I'm just saying, how is the state dealing with other disasters and trying to protect our? And trying to protect our kids here or, you know, others, like these people? All these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else in person? If not, we're gonna go online. Uh, Johnny May, if you can uh go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So Senator, so to conf, to confirm the Council of the Education meeting is that October twenty-third?
Yep, that was, it was supposed to be October twenty-third.
Okay, um, and also, I just think that the nonprofit that addresses homeless are not utilizing um senior, senior nursing housing, senior nursing care and senior housing programs that's out there, that these clients may be eligible. And also, I urge Alika Garcia to talk to you and invite him to introduce his program to Yaina High School, October seventeenth at forty-six PM. Yaina High School College and Career Fair. Did he come and talk to you?
Um, he left already, but I know, I believe his associates, so I will follow up with them.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.
Okay, very good. That's it for uh Senator Crab. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to Navy. If you, uh, sorry, did, did you, did anybody in person have a question? You what? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead to the microphone. I'm so sorry.
Aloha, Kalaisa. Mister uh Crab, um, you know, when you was an office manager, Mister Gates, we've been having uh safety issues out in uh Keaha Side, safety issues on our agriculture. You know, is there anything that you're gonna do to make sure that we still have our law enforcement to be there, not just temporarily? And also have State Department, Law Enforcement, city and state throughout the whole nine-six-seven-nine-two. A tool we get down to the problem of the, you know, root of the problem that we have it, not temporarily. We want to make sure my community, the kids, is safe. Because we got a lot of crimes every time. And you folks know, there is too many people died on Gates watch, you guys watch, Miley's watch, the governor's watch right now, the mayor's watch, too many. We don't want any more issues fall to the cracks. So I urge you to meet with the governor, talk with the governor. This is not just a one-time or thirty days or sixty days. We deserve as taxpayers to have the same service as he's taking care in Kaka'aku Waikiki. Because that's the highest voting area compared to nine-six-seven-nine-two. That is discriminatory, discriminated against us in the nine-six-seven-nine-two. Treat us as we was Kaka'aku and Waikiki. They complaining about the cameras at the beach park. They don't want the cameras, they know to our beach park. Don't worry about the tourism. You worry about Hawaii nei, people that's live here. It's our lifestyle. It's to compromise. It's not safe, okay? We have the right to enjoy our beaches. We have the right to go to the malls without being threatened.
Okay.
Any of the encampments or anything.
We're gonna move on.
Sure.
We're gonna move on. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, we're gonna go to Navy. We're gonna move on. I'm so, go ahead, keep it current.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. We got uh institutional pork at QLCC for our homeless, our kapuna, myself. Maybe I'm not kapuna yet. It's disgusting. Why are we buying, why are we taking this stuff from prison garbage food? Why? Because we're so desperate here in Yaina. Ah, only.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on over to Navy, since Navy is in person. Um, if you can go up to the microphone, give your report. And we do have Jewel set up, um, so. Uh, okay, go ahead, Jewel.
Oh, okay. Hello, Jewel Felipe, uh, representing Navy with Uncle Vic. Um, Brada Jeffrey has my slides right there. So real, real quick, we have neighbor, Navy Closure Task Force Updates, free webinar tomorrow, October sixteen from five to six PM. There's a website right there where you can go to it. And they also launched a Let's Talk Red Hill podcast. And then their next open house will be in November. And then their details or contact information is below in the green. And then, next slide, please. All right. And then for that, regarding the open house, you can learn more things about, you know, where does my water come from? Or just any concerns. And if you have any concerns in regarding Navy Closure Task Force and water quality, we encourage you to contact the Water Quality Action Team. Their twenty-four hour helpline and the number is right there at eight-zero-eight-two-one-zero-six-nine-six-eight. And again, in green, their contact information. And one more slide, please. And lastly, I'm pretty sure many of you know this occurred October seventh, the Ma'ili brush fire. I took these images from KITV and it was located within Lualua Naval Base. And according to Honolulu Fire Department, approximately seventy-four acres were burned, but it was fully extinguished and there is no danger to the community. And I'll just pass it on over to Uncle Vic for the rest.
Great, very good. Take it away, Uncle Vic.
Thanks, Jewel. Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. Uh, Erin, from what she was bringing up with the hurricane stuff, call the Department of Emergency Services or Civil Defense or open your phone book, it's on the front page, or go online. Plenty of information by bringing it up early. We wanna plan now, not later. Hurricane season is between June and November, so we're almost past. We dodged a few bullets. Mainland's getting hit hard. So the Navy is available to help our Hawaii people if requested. And with that, I'm gonna go into Koli Koli Pass, which is clear and passable for emergency use. That's all I have. Are there any questions for Jewel or myself?
Board members, any questions for Navy? Go ahead, board member Agustin.
You know, the signs in front on Farrington for the naval facility, Lualuale, all the letters are gone. So I'm just wondering if, because it's not really indicating anything anymore, if it'd be better to move that up Malka side closer to the entrance way of the facility where you, you guys have guards that can better watch and maintain that um as an indicator or repair it? I mean, I, I don't know what to say about the vandalism of it from the community, but.
No, I know about it. Uh, to repair the sign, it's gonna take money. We have to put in for that. And um, right now, there's other things that are more important than repairing letters to the sign. Actually, moving that whole wall back Malka, it's even gonna be more money, so. Whatever be the case, I'll log it down, pass it forward, we'll take it from there.
Thank you. In the last few minutes that we have left, I'm gonna hand it over to board member Ayo. Go ahead.
She didn't say how the fire started. The fire on the base. How did it start, Jewel?
Actually, based on the sources, they're, uh, they were still under investigation. They're not sure how the fire started. But there was no danger to that and it was just not much of a concern. I'm not sure why they didn't investigate more. They, we continued to ask and they said ongoing investigation and we didn't receive more details. So I'm not really sure.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very, uh, go ahead, board member Myers, last question.
Can you provide the answer next month? Because you, uh, how long your investigation is gonna take? Come to our board meeting and tell us. It's in our community. I'd like to know how it started.
Okay, yeah, I can get that answer for you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. We're seconds away from ten PM. Uh, thank you very much, Navy, for being with us. Thank you, community, board members. Uh, our next uh neighborhood board meeting is on November nineteenth at seven PM here at the Nana Kuli Library and virtually online. So at this time, we will adjourn. Please drive home safely. Aloha.